Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Diane Gorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Sorullo, Dweck, Marine Sorio, Rampershead, and I believe we have Commissioner Gold on Zoom. There he is. Hello, Commissioner. Before we get to today's agenda, I just want to take a moment to go over some recent news related to the Department of City Planning. In the five years since the COVID pandemic, New York City has seen a wave of office-to-residential conversions, transforming underutilized commercial spaces into much-needed homes, and the momentum for that is only continuing. A recent report from the City Comptroller found the potential for 44 office building conversions could transform 15.2 million square feet of office space into as many as 17,400 homes over the coming years. That would help take a huge bite out of our housing shortage and is a direct work, direct result of our work on both City of Yes and our advocacy in Albany for the 467M Tax Incentive Program, which will allow us to create income-restricted affordable housing from office conversions for the first time ever. I look forward to seeing many of these conversions come to fruition in the months and years to come. Thank you to all of you for your efforts there. Speaking of City of Yes, that bold initiative also legalized small accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, for one- and two-family homes throughout the city. For homeowners looking to take advantage of these new opportunities, the New York City Department of Buildings recently published its proposed rules for constructing ADUs and is going to hold an online public hearing about them on August 18 at 11:00 a.m. This is a key step in getting these units up and running, and I encourage anyone interested in the program to learn more at nyc.gov/DOB. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our Housing and Planning Fellows for all the incredible work they did at the City Planning, Department of City Planning and the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, the HPD, over the last couple of years. Over the course of their fellowship, these future leaders worked on everything from advancing comprehensive planning efforts to digging into the nuts and bolts of affordable housing financing, and they did it all with passion, creativity, and commitment. Their work was truly inspiring, and it shows that the future of New York City is truly in good hands, so thanks to all of them. Let's get to today's agenda. We're going to begin with Constellation, a homeownership project that would deliver nearly 100 homes across eight buildings in eastern Brooklyn. The buildings would be located in Bed-Stuy, Brownsville, East New York, and East Flatbush, and all sit close to subway or bus lines. The project is proposed by HPD in collaboration with Habitat for Humanity, and all of its homes would be income-restricted affordable. Staying in Brooklyn, we'll next head up to Greenpoint for a change in the city map. The applicant is looking to de-map a portion of Eagle Street from West Street to the East River. This change will update the city map to reflect actual ownership and use patterns and clarify maintenance responsibilities for private sewer infrastructure serving new waterfront development. Next, we're going to learn about a mixed-use proposal at 1410 Beach Channel Drive in Far Rockaway, Queens. This project would create nearly 120 new homes, of which 30 would be income-restricted affordable. Located a couple of blocks from the Far Rockaway Long Island Railroad Station, the building would include a house of worship and ground-floor retail. Next up, another application by HPD, this one regarding Praise Tabernacle at 10811 Sutton Boulevard in Jamaica, Queens. The application would facilitate the disposition of a city-owned lot to enable the existing church to undergo needed maintenance and upkeep. We will also continue our post-hearing discussion on the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan, where we'll be joined by the New York City Departments of Environmental Protection and Transportation. This important initiative by the Department of City Planning would allow for over 12,000 new homes, including approximately 4,000 permanently income-restricted affordable homes across a 230-block area, making it the largest mandatory inclusionary housing zone ever mapped in New York City. This plan would also generate over 7,000 jobs and include significant investments in stormwater infrastructure and the public realm. So with that, let us proceed immediately to our agenda. Madam Secretary, let's get to it.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, July 28, 2025. The time is 1:07 p.m., and a quorum is present. We'll start with items one through four on our agenda: certifications of UDOT designations, project approvals, and dispositions of city-owned properties in Brooklyn Community Districts 3, 5, 16, and 17. Our presenter is Veronica Brown.
All right, Veronica, hello.
Good afternoon. No, I think it worked. Okay. Okay. This is a presentation covering four separate applications by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, or HPD, for the designation of Urban Development Action Area Projects, or UDOT. These UDOT designations will result in eight scattered-site, income-restricted, affordable homeownership buildings developed by Habitat for Humanity. Each site is currently a vacant lot owned by the city. The sites are in four different community districts: Brooklyn CDs 3, 5, 16, and 17. Each community district is its own separate application in order to give the community boards the opportunity to weigh in on each of the projects that are specific to their districts. Together, the eight buildings would produce a total of 96 income-restricted homeownership units. I'll now go through the projects in each application in more detail, beginning with the application for Community District 3. So Site A, 908 to 910 Madison Street, is located near the northern boundary of Community District 3, near the border of Bedford-Stuyvesant and Bushwick. It's served by the J&amp;Z train and B47, B52, and Q25 bus service. About one mile to the south is Site B, 1901 to 1903 A Atlantic Avenue. This site is served by the A&amp;C train, Long Island Railroad, and B47 and B25 bus service. Site A, 908 to 910 Madison Street, is located in an R6B district, which allows medium-density multifamily buildings. The site was zoned R6B since the Bedford-Stuyvesant South rezoning of 2007, when R6B was mapped to preserve the low-rise brownstone character of the area. The Howard Avenue block front directly across Madison Street from the site was rezoned C44L in 2019 to facilitate the development of a six-story mixed-use building. Surrounding land uses are primarily three- to five-story residential, with some community facilities, mixed-use, and commercial buildings. Here is a photo of the project area looking south from Madison Street. The site is a corner lot on Madison and Howard. The proposed development is a four-story residential building with 13,976 square feet of residential floor area built under the existing R6B zoning. It would be 14 units, including four three-bedrooms, six two-bedrooms, and four one-bedrooms. These units will all be income-restricted homeownership. Moving on to the next site, Site B is at 1901 to 1903 A Atlantic Avenue. It's an M11 and R7D district, which allows medium-density residential and light industrial commercial uses. This site was mapped M11-R7D as part of the Bedford-Stuyvesant South rezoning of 2007. This paired district was mapped to reflect the mixed-use character of the area and to allow for a range of uses while particularly encouraging income-restricted affordable housing development. The Atlantic Avenue block front to the east of the block of Site B was rezoned in 2019 from M11-R7D to R8A-C24 to facilitate a new 14-story 100% income-restricted building. The surrounding building forms are varied, with several large new construction apartment buildings, older two-story homes, and single-story commercial buildings or gas stations in the immediate vicinity of the site. In this photo, looking north from Atlantic Avenue, you can see the Long Island Railroad elevated line running along the center of the street, as well as the varied residential buildings lining the northern side of Atlantic. This is another view of the project area, again looking north from Atlantic Avenue. An eight-story building can be seen to the east of the site and lower-scale buildings to the west. The proposed development is a seven-story residential building with 18,903 square feet of residential floor area built under the existing M11-R7D zoning. It would be 20 units, with six three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and 12 one-bedrooms. These units will all be income-restricted homeownership. So now move to the next application, which is for the UDOT designation of two sites in Brooklyn Community District 5 in the East New York section of Brooklyn. The first of these sites, Site C, is located at 881 to 885 New Jersey Avenue. This site is primarily served by bus, including the B20, B15, and B83. The nearest subway stations are the Pennsylvania Avenue Station for 3 Service, .6 miles away, and the New Lots Avenue Station for L Service, .7 miles away. About one and a half miles to the north of Site C is Site D, which is 650 Glenmore Avenue. The site is well-served by public transportation, including the C train along Picken Avenue and B47 and Q24 bus. Site C, 881 to 885 New Jersey Avenue, is surrounded by a variety of land uses and building types, including one- and two-family homes, single-story commercial and community facility buildings, and two large NYCHA campuses, the Penn Wortman Houses and Linden Houses, which are approximately one block to the south. The Nine Acre Linden Park is less than one block to the east. The site is zoned R5, which allows for low-rise multifamily buildings. Here is a view of the project area looking northeast from New Jersey Avenue. The proposed development is a four-story residential building with 7,183 square feet of floor area built under the existing R5 zoning. It would be eight units, with seven two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom apartment. These units would all be income-restricted homeownership. The next site, Site D, is located at 650 Glenmore Avenue. The surrounding area has a mix of uses, including detached one- or two-family homes and multifamily apartment buildings. The site is located one block north of Picken Avenue, which is a major commercial corridor with mixed-use and single-story commercial buildings. Site D is zoned R5B, and it was rezoned as part of East New York's Neighborhood Plan, which was adopted in 2016. Here's a view of the site looking southeast from Glenmore Avenue. It's a corner lot on Glenmore Avenue and Warwick Street. The proposed development is a three-story residential building with 6,560 square feet of floor area built under the existing R5B zoning. It would be six units, all of which are two-bedroom apartments. These units would all be income-restricted homeownership. Next, I'll walk through the three sites in Community District 16, which is in the Brownsville neighborhood of Brooklyn. So first, Site E is located at 1794 to 1796 St. John's Place. Approximately one block to the south is Site F, 84 to 87 Legion Street, and two further blocks south is Site G, 250 to 254 Hersl Street. Each of these sites are within .5 miles of 3 train service and also serve by B12, B14, B7, and B15 bus service. 1794 to 1796 St. John's Place is in an R6 zoning district. The surrounding uses are varied, with mixed-use residential and commercial buildings generally three to five stories in height. It's one block from Picken Avenue, which is a major commercial corridor. Here's a view of the project area looking south from St. John's Place. The proposed development is a six-story residential building with 11,408 square feet of floor area built under the existing R6 zoning. It would be 12 units with 10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments. These units would all be income-restricted homeownership. The next site is 85 to 87 Legion Street, which is located in R6 district again. The surrounding uses are primarily two- to three-story residential buildings. Here's a photo of the project area looking east from Legion Street. The proposed development is a six-story residential building with 11,457 square feet of floor area built under the existing R6 zoning. It would be 12 units with 10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments. These units would all be income-restricted homeownership. The third and final site in Community District 16 is 250 to 254 Hersl Street. This site is located in R6 district. The surrounding uses are primarily two- to three-story residential buildings, with Betsy Head Memorial Park located less than one block to the south. Here's a photo of the project area looking west from Hersl Street. The proposed development is again a six-story residential building with 11,530 square feet of floor area built under the existing R6 zoning, but again be 12 units with 10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments, and they would all be income-restricted homeownership. We've reached our final application, which is for Community District 17. This application includes one site at 395 to 397 East 94th Street. The site is .5 miles from 3 Service, the Saratoga Avenue Station, and is also served by B7 and B35 bus. 395 to 397 East 94th Street is located in R6 district. The surrounding area is primarily two-story residential buildings with taller six-story buildings along Kings Highway. The site is directly adjacent to a four-story school building, which contains both a public and a charter middle school. Here's a photo of the project area looking northeast from East 94th Street. Residential buildings are on one side of the site with the schoolyard to the other. The proposed development is a six-story residential building with 11,429 square feet of floor area built under the existing R6 zoning. It would be 12 units with 10 two-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments, and these units will all be income-restricted homeownership. So in summary, this is four separate applications by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. The applicant is seeking the UDOT designation of eight total sites across those four community districts, and together, these actions will result in 96 units of income-restricted homeownership housing. Thanks so much, and I welcome any questions.
Great, thanks, Veronica. I have some questions for you. Just give me one second, everybody, here. Just a quick review for me. These are all, all these sites are today vacant and owned by the city, correct?
That's true.
And they're all proposed to operate under the existing zoning map, correct?
Yes.
And the actions that we're looking at are all UDOT designations. Is that all correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to salute the concept of homeownership in what appears to be predominantly, in many cases, homeowner communities. So I think that's good, and hopefully the communities will appreciate that. Could you talk about the price points, proposed price points of the units, as well as the income stratas that would plug into those?
Yeah, thanks for the question. HPD will be using the open-door term sheet, but they'll be able to speak more specifically to the AMIs and prices of the units at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Goodrich?
I was wondering the type of homeownership specifically, like would it be HDSC? Would it be Mitchell Llama?
Yeah, great question. So the sponsor, Habitat for Humanity, intends to work with the Interborough CLT and do this under a co-op ownership model, but HPD can answer any further questions about that when they're back.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, because a lot of the other ones are co-ops, so I guess I was just wondering.
HPD said they intend this is under a co-op ownership model, but I don't, the HP can provide more details if you have more specific questions than the...
Yeah, so I guess we can ask at the hearing, because HDSC and Mitchell Lamas are also co-ops.
Oh, okay, so yeah, they can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. So I noticed that you have a lot of the buildings on lot lines, but lot line windows. So the question of lot line windows always comes up as a result of maybe neighboring buildings at some other point knocking down and then raising up. Are those windows, one, utilized for light and air for those calculations of those rooms? And two, are they Calamine windows, which are, which are specific windows for lot lines?
I think HPD will have to, and their architecture team will have to answer that.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner, Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. This is interesting and exciting. I appreciate the thoroughness of the documents. It's, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of conversations about this, but just before we see this again, I'm wondering if you can share with us, I don't know if you have the information now, but certainly when this comes back, regarding the energy standards that we should be expecting here. I know that HPD has been maintaining, you know, a certain level, but I don't see, correct me if I'm wrong, any applications or signals that this would, for example, take advantage of the low-energy performance, low-energy, ultra-low-energy building definition that was introduced with the City of Yes? And so, given the scale of the buildings, I think this could be a real opportunity, both to go beyond what we've been seeing from HPD in terms of net zero, for example, for the lower buildings, but also just to see kind of like the maximum amount of energy performance, energy efficiency performance for the lower, for the, sorry, higher buildings? So I'm wondering if you can share with us, kind of like what, what are the expectations at this point? If there are any ultra-low-energy building applications here, and if not, why not?
Thanks so much. HPD has shared that these buildings will be solar-ready and meet Enterprise Green Community Standards, but as far as taking advantage of, starting from carbon neutrality changes or any other sort of energy efficiency relevant standards, I think HPD will have to answer that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, the reason why I'm asking this is because that, that standard is not net zero, it's not personally net zero. And this, given the scale of the lower buildings, I think this is a clear opportunity to do that. But then the other question is, and this is, this is, I think, a question for HPD, but something we have discussed in the past, it would be great to know how is HPD, or where is HPD investing discretionary funds that have been allocated for specifically renewables, solar in particular? And I'm wondering if you have an opportunity to maybe remind them of that. I would be very interested in understanding, where are they investing that? And if they're not investing it here, why is that?
Great, we'll communicate that question, HPD.
Thank you.
Next, Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, in looking through the materials, I noted that in the community board 17, the materials talked about how many one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, et cetera, but in the others, they didn't necessarily, they showed a plan of an average floor. But I'm wondering if you could get from HPD in each one of the specific buildings, the distribution from one, twos, and threes, if any?
You mean like the distribution on specific floors? Because we have the within-building distribution on each slide and also in the materials.
I didn't see within each building.
Like on what floor? The two bedrooms will be...
Yeah, I saw the standard layout, but is that the same on every floor?
Okay, we can ask HPD for additional materials about how the bedroom mix will be distributed throughout the building.
Right.
Okay, great, we'll ask.
And the numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Rampershead?
One quick question. Do you know what the projected timeline would be for HPD to get all these buildings constructed?
Um, I think we'll have to ask HPD.
Okay, with no other questions here, thank you, Veronica. This item is certified, or these items are certified. Calendar one, two, three, and four, and let's move on to the next.
The fifth item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 1. Our presenter is Abraham Abreu.
Hello, Abraham.
Good afternoon.
You know, how many times have I done this? You think I would know that button's there by now? So yes, Eagle Street demapping, Greenpoint, Brooklyn CD1. This is a project by a, or application by a private applicant, BOP Greenpoint D LLC. They are seeking a city map amendment to eliminate a portion of Eagle Street west of West Street. You can see that in the inset map on the right here in the yellow. This is being proposed or pursued at the request of DEP pursuant to an infrastructure maintenance declaration that the applicant entered into with them on December 21, 2022. This will not result in any physical changes to the project area. I really want to make two points here. Number one is that the street in the section is privately owned, and then number two, it's currently serving two functions, one as the pedestrian upland connection to the Waterfront Espinade, and two to be vehicle access to the adjacent development sites. Both of those functions would remain intact if this application is approved. So a little bit of background here, in 2005, the City Council adopted a city sponsor rezoning of approximately 184 blocks along two miles of Brooklyn's East River Waterfront. Over the course of the next few years, from 2013 to 2023, various authorizations and chair certifications and other things were implemented to help facilitate the development of nearby waterfront sites with housing and public open space. In December 21, 2022, is when this infrastructure maintenance declaration that I mentioned went into effect, this provides for ongoing maintenance of the private water and sewer infrastructure by the applicant. The applicant agreed to pursue the demapping of this portion of Eagle Street at DEP's request, which is what this application is. And then, May 4, 2023, was when DEP did their final site connection approval for the utility infrastructure for the Eagle Street development. So if you look at our map here, again, we can see this portion of Eagle Street in yellow. This area has several unbuilt and privately-owned paper streets that are matched between West Street and the East River. The 2005 Greenpoint-Wildingsboro Waterfront Plan anticipated that it would remain privately-owned and access to the water we provided by upland connections as required by waterfront zoning rules. So it was never contemplated that the city would, would take ownership of these. Again, like I mentioned, the street in question is a designated upland connection that will remain publicly accessible after the demapping, if it's approved. And part of why this demapping is being pursued is that the existing privately-owned paper street scenario that's going on could create a liability for DEP to maintain private infrastructure. So, you know, this is, the infrastructure that's under the street is, you know, privately-owned, providing service only to the private property that is considered connected to, not part of... to, not part of the public system. Um, so, uh, the infrastructure maintenance declaration obligates the owner to maintain this private infrastructure, and then demapping this paper street would remove DEP potential liability. Um, so let's take a look at some maps here. Uh, so here is our land use map. Um, the street in question is currently mapped with an R6 and R8, uh, zoning districts, and in the surrounding area, we have other districts like M12, R6A, R6A, R6B. Um, you can also see, um, to the north, we have, um, uh, the Newton Barge Playground for some local open space. Uh, so here is an arrow, so you can, um, see kind of some of the scale of these developments that are going on here. Um, to the north of the area, it's BD map, is the Eagle and West, uh, development. To the south, um, this is currently a site that will be, uh, is currently being used for staging of construction equipment and such, but it will be the, uh, final future phase of Greenpoint Landing, uh, which will be the other, um, development that will be accessed by this demapped portion of Eagle Street. Um, to the east, you can see the G-Chain running under Manhattan Avenue, and then one more block to the east is McGinnis Boulevard, which, uh, connects to the Pulaski Bridge to get you into Long Island City Queens. Uh, zooming in a little closer, we can see that most of the streets in the area, including Eagle Street itself, are mapped at a 60-foot width. Uh, the stretch of Eagle Street that's proposed to be demapped is about 537 feet long, so that comes out to about 32,020 square feet to be demapped potentially. Have some site photos, so this is looking at the proposed demapping, um, uh, highlighted in that dashed yellow. Um, this is looking at Eagle Street across from West Street. Um, I also do want to point out that the south side of the street, uh, to our left here, uh, that's a temporary condition because of the construction, the roadway is there, the, um, upland connection's not yet there. Uh, the north side on the right is indicative of what the final condition would be with that pedestrian connection. This is, um, about halfway through the demapping area, looking south. Um, and then this last picture here is at the very west end of the to be, proposed to be demapped, uh, Eagle Street, looking north along that, um, pedestrian Espinade. Uh, so again, to summarize, the private applicant, uh, BOP Greenpoint DLLC is seeking a change to the city map to eliminate Eagle Street to the west of West Street, as shown in the diagram. Uh, this mapped street is privately owned, it's never been improved as a city street. Um, again, it's being, this is being proposed at the request of DEP pursuant to the infrastructure maintenance declaration, signed back in December 2022, which provides for ongoing maintenance of the water and sewer infrastructure by the applicant, and, uh, the demapped portion of Eagle Street would continue to be accessible as its upland connection and also as vehicle access to the, um, developments on either side. That's the presentation, happy to answer any questions?
Great, thank you. I'll start with Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick, okay, clarificate, confirmation, I, I heard you correctly. Because the, the, the site will continue to be publicly accessible, there are no impacts to the waterfront access plan, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Commissioner Goodrich?
Uh, my question is about the point you made, uh, in Slide 4, I think it is, where you talk about that the, the potential liability, um, oh, the existing privately-owned paper street creates a potential liability for DEP to maintain private infra, infrastructure. I was interested to hear, I'm interested to hear a little bit more about what that looks like, or is it like the water and sewer? Just interested to learn, um, what that liability would be.
Yeah, so it, it's kind of a, an odd situation, right? Because, um, you know, makes street a city-owned, right? And, um, but the infrastructure that's under this portion of Eagle Street, privately-owned, is considered to be the private infrastructure that hooks in these developments to the overall city sewer system. Um, DEP can always tell you more, but basically, my understanding is that because, like, typically, infrastructure under mapped streets, um, would be maintained by the city, but it's private, so it would be maintained, so there's a little bit of like a conflict there, and so by, uh, demapping the street, taking it off the city map, it makes it 100% clear that this is private infrastructure to be maintained by the property owner.
So, when a street or a paper street is privately owned, uh, do they also have to maintain the sewer? No, right? The, any...
They being, I'm sorry.
The private, um, whoever owns that private?
Well, um, that's kind of the situation, I mean, Stephen, have any, help clarify that a little bit?
Hi, uh, Stephen Leonard, Director of Technical Review. Um, yeah, I think it, it depends, there's a lot of different situations out there, um, but usually, um, the, the infrastructure that we're talking about here is, um, to serve a, a specific development and to connect that development into the greater system. In most properties, that's inside the property, right? So like, you, you always think about the pipe that comes out from your property.
Right.
Um, once it leaves your property, it's the city's job, and when it's in your property, it's your job. Here, part of the applicant's prop, or, yeah, part of the applicant's property is under a mapped street, and so it creates, the, the mapped street creates the, um, you know, certain rules required DEP to maintain infrastructure in mapped streets, but it's, the city didn't build this sewer pipe, the city didn't intend it to be part of the plan for this area, um, this was all installed in the mapped street to serve the private entity that owns the mapped street, and so we're just demapping the street in order to remove any doubt as to whose responsibility that is. Um, it's also, you know, makes sense in that this is a paper street, DOT has no plans to acquire it, DOT has no plans to build it out, so it also just makes sense from a mapping standpoint that we're updating the map to, to match the built, uh, and ownership reality here.
Thank you. I, I wasn't even aware that, um, my brain was churning, I wasn't even aware of privately-owned streets, and then so I thought, thank you, Mr. Soria, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting part of, of the city, and it, there's a lot of different flavors of, of that phenomenon, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
So Stephen, while we have you, is, is the maintenance, um, of the street, is there a schedule promulgated by DEP that the private owners must, must meet, or is the maintenance solely at their discretion?
There's no street.
Well...
It's unbuilt, also.
Let's, uh, let's, let's give Stephen a chance to respond.
Were you referring to the street or to the in, the...
No, the infrastructure.
Um, we'll, we'll look into that, we'll ask the applicant about that. We haven't read the, 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 the maintenance agreement, or the maintenance declaration, um, that was referenced here, um, so we'll, we'll ask the applicant to look into it, unless you know more than you know.
My, my understanding is that, um, when, if this, this is approved and then the map is filed and officially gets taken off the city map, that's when like, um, it's, like, um, totally said and done? Um, I don't know if there's a specific timeline leading up to that, and, excuse me, in the interim, we can definitely reach out and ask.
It is, it, I'm so sorry.
Wait, hold on, one, one second, Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, I just simply want to know, I mean, once the owner has responsibility, uh, no, again, is, is the maintenance of the infrastructure, which is relatively new, right, since, I mean, the owners of, 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 of the infrastructure are presumably the developers of, of the properties recently built, right? So, uh, I'm just wondering going forward, you know?
Oh, do you mean like how often they need to do maintenance operations? That's, okay, all right, I think I was misunderstanding your question.
Yeah, so that should be in that, in that declaration, and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll ask the applicant to, to follow up with us on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Murrin? Passing, okay. Okay, great, we're certified, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next.
Okay. The sixth item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map and zoning tax amendments in Queens Community District 14. Our presenter is Eleke Ede.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Rodnick and Commissioners. This is a proposal by private applicant 1410 Beach Channel Drive LLC requesting two actions. A zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R5 zoning district to R6A slash C24 overlay and R6A zoning district, and a zoning tax amendment to establish an MIH area. The project area is located at 1410 Beach Channel Drive in the Far Rockaway neighborhood in Community District 14. It is in Council District 31, which is represented by, uh, Council Member Selvina Brooks-Powers. The proposed actions would facilitate a new seven-story plus seller mixed-use residential, commercial, and community facility building. The proposed, uh, development would have a total floor area of approximately 111,000 square feet, that's 3.5 FAR, and will include a total of approximately 113 residential units. It would have a base height of 65 feet, uh, have a setback of 15 feet before rising to a total height of 77 feet. 30 units would be permanently income restricted pursuant to MIH Option 1. Uh, the cellar and ground floors would contain an approximate total of 81 parking spaces. There would also be recreational space on the roof. The project area outlined here in black, uh, this is an aerial view, um, facing north and showing the project area and the surrounding context. The project area is located on the northeastern corner of Beach Channel Drive and Namie Oak Avenue. The project area is irregularly shaped and sits on the southern portion of the triangular block, 15525, which is bounded by Hasack Street to the north, Beach Channel Drive to the west, and Namie Oak Avenue to the south. Hasack Street and Namie Oak Avenue are narrow streets at widths of 50 feet each, and Beach Channel Drive is a wide street at a width of 80 feet. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential, community facility, and commercial uses, industrial buildings, and houses of worship. It is in the outer transit zone and is subject to the special 24 dash 2, 241 parking provisions and has adequate, uh, public transportation. The Far Rockaway, Mott Avenue, uh, Mott Avenue, uh, subway station servicing the A-line is located within a third or three mile south or a 20, uh, 12-minute walk from the project area. There are also multiple bus lines, uh, serving the area, and the terminal station of the LIDR Far Rockaway branch line, along with the surf, along with surface parking is located , uh, 200 feet east of the, uh, proposed project area along Namie Oak Avenue. The project area is indicated here in black and the development site is in red. Uh, the project area was mapped and R5 in 1961 has, and has remained so ever since. It's approximately 200 feet northwest of the downtown Far Rockaway rezoning area, which was approved in 2017 and aimed to reestablish, uh, downtown Far Rockaway as the commercial and transportation hub of the Far Rockaway Peninsula. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential, community facility, and, uh, commercial uses. The surrounding area is mapped R3X, R5, R6, R7, 1, M1, 1 district, and, uh, C12 and C24 overlay districts. It is mostly comprised of 1, 2, and multifamily residences, mixed-use commercial and residential and industrial buildings, community facilities, and most notably, houses of worship, uh, as shown in blue. Specifically to the immediate north of the project area is the approximately 2 million square foot Redfern Night Court campus, which has approximately 604 residential units, uh, distributed across a range of six to nine-story buildings. The proposed, uh, development outlined in red consists of lots 1 and 51. Lot 51, 1 and 51 are approximately 28,625 square feet in area. Lot 1 contains a one-story car dealership and a one-story house of worship with approximately 3,888,000, uh, square feet of, uh, floor area. Lot 51 is used as parking space. The project area is partially in the 100-year and 500-year flood drains, and the development site would, uh, contain measures, resiliency measures, uh, including elevation of all habitable spaces above the, uh, designed flood elevation, dry flood proven of the ground floor, and the installation of flood gates. Here's a view of the project area as seen looking south along Beach Channel Drive at the existing car dealership. Here's a view of the development site around the corner from Beach Channel Drive on Namie Oak Avenue. The proposed actions would facilitate a seven-story building containing 111,000 square feet of floor area. About 4,440 square feet would be allocated to community facility floor area and 4,881,000 square feet, uh, to commercial floor area on the ground floor. 30 units would be permanently, uh, income restricted pursuant to MIH Option 1. Separate, uh, dedicated entrances for the residential, commercial, and community facility spaces would be located along, uh, Beach Channel Drive. Parking on the ground floor would be accessible by Beach Channel Drive, and parking space in the cellar would be accessible on Namie Oak Avenue. To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes two actions. A zoning map amendment to change the existing R5 to an R6A and R6, and R6A with a C24 zoning overlay district, as indicated by the blue line on the image to the right. R6A districts generally produce buildings at a scale of, uh, seven to eight stories. They also allow for maximum heights of up to 95 feet with, uh, qualifying income restricted housing or qualifying senior housing. C24 districts are a commercial overlay district that are mapped within residence, residential districts, and would permit a maximum commercial FAR of 2.0 within R4 to R10 zoning districts. The applicant is also seeking a zoning tax amendment to map MIH Options 1 and 2, and is seeking MIH Option 1. Option 1 requires that 25% of the floor area be, be provided to households at an average income of 60% AMI. Option 2 requires that 30% of the residential floor area be set aside for income restricted housing units for households at an average of 80% AMI. This application requires a racial equity report because it would increase the residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The annual, uh, median household income for CD14 is approximately $61,000, which is lower than those for the borough of Queens and New York City overall. The applicant proposes to provide 118 units in total. 30 units would be, uh, subject to MIH Option 1 and would be provided across a range of 40 to 80, 80% AMI, with estimated monthly rents ranging from 1,130 thou, uh, 1,130 dollars for a studio unit to 3,250 dollars for a two-bedroom unit at an estimated average income from 40 thou, 45,000 for a one-person household to 129,000 for a four-person household. Of the approximately 124,000 residents within CD14, 3% identify as Asian, 36 as Black, 23 as Hispanic, 32 as White, and 6 as more than one race. Between 2010 and 2020, the area saw an increase in Asian, Asian and Hispanic populations, a very slight increase in the Black population, and the White population stayed the same. So in summary, the applicant is seeking two actions. A zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R5 to an R6A with a C24 overlay and, uh, R6 to facilitate the proposed development. The applicant also seeks a tax amendment to establish an MIH area. The proposed development would rise to a height of 77 feet and would include a ground floor, community facility, and commercial space, and approximately 118 dwelling units. That concludes my presentation, happy to take any questions?
Great, thank you very much. Um, let me, uh, start by asking, is the applicant here either the car dealership or the church that are currently on the site? No, no.
No, I understand.
The churches, what is the church? What's the name of the church?
Uh, Glory Light Tabernacle.
I'm sorry, I say it again?
Glory Light Tabernacle?
Glory Light Tabernacle. And is the anticipation here that the 4,400 square feet of community facility space would be for the benefit of Glory Light Tabernacle Church?
Yes, that is the expectation.
Um, okay, and you said that the current square footage of the church is about 3,800, uh, square feet?
Uh, ye, one second. Oh, can I get back to you?
Yes, of course, of course. Um, okay. And then last question for me relates to the flooding. Um, so as you noted, it's in a, an area which is prone to, to flood. What sort of, uh, uh, efforts will be taken here to, to address that or to protect the building from, from that condition?
So, um, on the ground floor, there would be installation of flood gates for dry proven purposes. Um, habitable spaces would be on the start on the second floor, and the cellar would be completely dry-proofed, and, um, I believe there would be a certification applied for by the applicant to ensure that any utilities are adequately protected in events of flood, flood, during flood and events. Okay, thank you very much. Let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. My question is about the apartment distribution here. Um, I saw in the materials that of the hundred and nineteen apartments, twenty are studios, eighty-nine are one-bedroom, and only nine are more than one-bedroom.
Yes.
And in these community boards, one of the biggest needs is for family-sized housing.
Okay.
So my question is, why are we getting studios and ones?
Okay, um, I will forward that to the applicant.
Okay, and with that, the other part of that, of course, is I would like to see more family-sized apartments at this site to address the actual needs that people are experiencing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick follow-up, two questions. One quick follow-up to the Chair's question on flooding. Thank you for acknowledging that on the presentation, and I saw in the materials that you referenced, referenced the three strategies that basically are kind of like the requirements, right?
Right.
Um, but I'm wondering if you can ask the applicant to share a little bit more information with us in terms of how, like, what's the actual design for this? Um, usually, a section would be useful just to understand exactly how or what is the plan to build these flood gates, et cetera. Um, the, the other question that I had, and, and whether, actually, in relation to that first question, it'd be great if we can understand a little bit whether the, the parking spaces could actually be utilized or work in tandem with whatever flood protection strategy is set in motion here. Um, but in addition to that, I was just wondering, or more broadly, if, if you can also ask the applicant to share with us, what are the additional sustainability measures considered here, unless you can share with us now whether there's any renewables planned for, for the site, or what's the level of energy efficiency that is expected?
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you for those questions. I don't have that information, so I will forward it to the applicant.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hi, Chair. I just wanted to confirm that the current square footage of the church is about thirty-eight hundred square feet.
Okay, got it. I had it right, and I think that you said it in your presentation, which is where I got it. So thank you very much. Um, okay. I don't see any other questions for you all, so this item is now certified. Thank you. We'll move on to the next.
The seventh item on our, on our agenda is a non-U D A P referral review of a U D A P designation and project approval in Queens Community District twelve. Our presenter again is Elke Adé.
Uh, good afternoon again. Hello, good afternoon again. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, seeking a U, uh, an urban development area action designation and project approval for Queens Block one zero one four one, Lot eighty-one. Uh, the U D A P action would allow the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to complete the disposition of the project area to Priest Tabernacle Church to facilitate a refinancing, investment, and conservation of the existing community facility. This project area is located at, uh, one fifty twenty one oh eighth Avenue in South Jamaica, Queens, Community District twelve. It is in Council District twenty-eight and represented by Council, uh, Council Member Adrian Adams. Lot eighty-seven is a city-owned and a, Lot eighty-seven is city-owned, and a back portion of the church building sits on half of the project area, and the rest of the lot is vacant and used as a yard area for the church. The existing church was built in nineteen forty, and at the time of construction, it sat across both Lots fifty-four and Lot, former Lot seventy-one, which is outlined here in green. By nineteen eighty-four, taxes had accrued, and H P D acquired the property and rem due to the back taxes. In nineteen ninety, as part of the Second Amendment to the South Jamaica One U R P, H P D received disposition approval for former Lot seventy-nine from the Board of Estimates. Former Lot seventy-nine was subsequently subdivided into Lots seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-three, eighty-five, and eighty-seven. Houses were built on all these lots except Lot eighty-seven. Lot eighty-seven remained in city ownership, and even though the church building had been on that portion since the nineteen forties. Here's a view of the front of the church I seen from one oh eighth street. And here's a view of the project area that would be subject to the U D A P project. As you can see, it contains the back of the church, and the rest of the lot is vacant. The project area is located in the South Jamaica neighborhood, which comprises the residential portion of the larger Jamaica area. Surrounding area is mostly comprised of residential, commercial, and institutional, and public facility uses. Residential uses consist of detached one and two-family residences and semi-detached homes. Houses of worship and schools make up institutional uses. Commercial uses consist of grocery shops and takeout restaurants, which are mapped along Subson Boulevard, which runs along the subtly portion of the project areas block. It is in an R four-one district, and the immediate surrounding area is mapped R four, R four-one and R five D. Houses of worship have a youth group three B designation and are permitted in R four districts as a fright. Uh, here's the tax map showing the project area, and Lot eighty-seven is city-owned, and Lot fifty-four is owned by Priest Tabernacle. The project areas block is bounded by one, one oh eighth Avenue to the west, Subson Avenue to the south, Arlington Terrace to the east, and one hundred and fifty-fourth Street to the north. So in summary, the U D A P will facilitate a refinancing, investment, and conservation of the existing facility. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me, um, just follow up. So there's a city-owned lot here
Yes.
That is vacant
Yes.
And also, the church is partially on it, is that correct?
Yes, the church.
Um, the church uses the empty lot for its purposes, weddings, funerals, et cetera?
Yes.
This would be a disposition of the city-owned land to the church?
Yes.
Um, and the, the, your slide here says that it would be for the facilitation of refinancing, investment, and conservation of the existing community facility. Does the church intend to do something specific on this site?
Um, that I'm not sure about, but, um, from our conversations with H P D, they mentioned that it would help them get a mortgage, refinance their mortgage, their currently very high mortgage rates, but nothing specific, at least as communicated to us by H P D.
Okay. Lynda, do you want to add something?
Sure. Hi, um, good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, so this is, this is mostly a cleanup action. So as Elkey laid out in the, um, the slide with the history of the site, um, during the urban renewal, the city did receive disposition approval already. So this is just applying U D A P so that the church can apply for loans that could, that could apply to the entire building. So, so it's a way to preserve that church on the site and to just clean up this action, um, you know, that, that started, you know, several decades ago.
So the disposition was granted previously?
Correct. This is not a disposition.
But it was not, but it was not disposed?
Um, it, this was, this is city-owned.
Yes, it was not disposed. So the, so the, the rights were granted to the city to dispose of it, but it was not disposed?
Yeah.
And so the designation of a U D A P action, U D A P here for a city-owned property that has not been disposed yet, is the presumption that the city will dispose of it using its pre-existing authority and then allow the church to
Yes.
Do the necessary to lower their, uh, their interest rates and to improve the property as they see fit, is that correct?
That's correct. The city doesn't have plans to develop the site, so it is to
The city doesn't, and it sounds like the, the church doesn't either.
Right, but it's mostly to, yeah, as you can see, that lot sort of cuts this church, um, up, so it's, it really applies the entire sort of project of the church.
Okay, thank you. Um, other questions? Okay, all right, we're going to refer this one out to the community board and to the B P for sixty days. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next one.
The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permits, of special permits, zoning tax amendments, a modification of a previously approved special permit, and a modification of a previously restrictive declaration in Brooklyn Community District one. Our presenters, Lucia Marquez Reagan.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. This is a pre-hearing presentation for Domino Site B, which certified June second, twenty twenty-five. This is a private application by Domino A Partners LLC and Domino B Partners LLC to facilitate the development of Domino Site B, an approximately one point one seven million square foot mixed-use building containing one thousand two hundred and sixty-two units and twelve thousand two hundred and thirty square feet of commercial uses. The development would rise to an overall max height of five hundred and forty-five feet with a podium height of forty-seven feet. It would contain three hundred parking spaces, no loading berths, and seven-foot-wide balconies wrapping the development on all sides. The project area is located at two sixty-four to three hundred and fifty Kent Avenue in the Williamsburg neighborhood of Community District one, Brooklyn. The applicant proposes a series of actions to facilitate the development, including a tax amendment to seventy-four seventy-four three, special provisions to bulk, to create Sections A fourteen permitting within a large-scale general development in Community District one, Brooklyn, to apply Section twenty-three twenty-three floor area exemptions to buildings that existed on or prior to December fifteenth, December fifth, rather, twenty twenty-four, to exempt floor area and use exempted floor area in one or more new buildings within the same large scale. The tax amendment includes conditions within a newly created Section B thirteen, where the commission may permit the exempted floor area in existing buildings to be reallocated as long as such exemptions result in residential amenities accessible to all residents of the large-scale general development, and the floor area equivalent to twenty percent of the amount of residential floor area exempted be allocated to incomes averaging sixty percent A M I. The second action, a large-scale general development special permit pursuant to seventy-four seventy-four three and seventy-four seventy-four two A two. Um, one waiver would apply the newly created special permit to use exempted floor area within the large scale. Um, and another waiver pursuant to seventy-four seventy-four two A, special provisions to bulk modifications to increase the building's height footprint and remove previously required setback along Kent Avenue. This is again to facilitate the development of, with a max height of five hundred and forty-five feet, a larger footprint, and remove previously required fifteen-foot setback along Kent Avenue at a hundred and ten feet, and the building would instead rise sheer without setback. The applicant is proposing to waive twenty-three sixty, twenty-three six six two C, to waive limitations on bulkhead height to produce a bulkhead with a max overall height of five hundred and ninety-one feet, as well as waiving permitted obstructions to permit seventy percent plain coverage of seven-foot-wide balconies that would wrap each tower beginning on the fifth story. Uh, the third action is to reduce required loading berths from two berths to one berth on the zoning law of the large scale. This would remove the only loading berth located on this, at this building. And lastly, modifications to previously approved large-scale general development to reflect updates to plans and zoning calculations. On June tenth, Brooklyn Community Board one voted unanimously with thirty-nine in favor to approve the application with conditions. The condition submitted by the community board was for the applicant to work with the board elected and the School Construction Authority to site a school at the River Ring Development, an approved large-scale development to the north. River Ring is not, uh, and its geography is not the subject of this application. July sixteenth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a hearing and voted conditional favorable with the following conditions: the siding of a new school at the River Ring Development, the applicant to continue to deliver pedestrian prioritization through providing quality canopy cover, attention to material selection and lighting, and the applicant to provide special design consideration to maximize seasonal thermal comfort of balconies. Um, we want to note for the commission that the department shared questions that were posed during certification, including questions related to income restricted unit breakdown for the large scale, design of the development, and rationale for waivers, coastal flood resiliency, School Construction Authority school sighting, and have asked the applicant to provide answers to these items on the hearing this Wednesday. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Chair Knuckles.
What is the, uh, thank you. What is the significance of December fifth, uh, twenty twenty-four?
Um, I, I believe that's the approval of city of yes for housing opportunity.
Ah, a date that everybody should remember forever and ever. December five, twenty twenty-four.
I'm, uh, sorry.
I think I'm, I think I'm the only one actually who remembers the date, but
Thank you for the question.
July fourth and December
Exactly, exactly. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Man?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the School Construction Authority. Did we ever get a letter from them indicating that they had declined to pick up the option on the site? Was that in the package and I missed it?
Uh, so we received, um, confirmation that the, the letter required by the restrictive declaration was from, was sent from the applicant to the S C A. Um, we also did reach out to the S C A as well, and the applicant can speak more to the discussions that they had with the School Construction Authority.
Okay, and, and when we reached out, or when the department reached out to the S C A, did they have a response?
Um, not, uh, exactly. I think the applicant could speak more to kind of their discussions with the S C A.
Sure, yeah, and I guess I'm just, I'm asking more from an inter-agency coordination point of view, that, um, again, S C A an option to build a school on the site, and it sounds like they've declined the option, and it sounds like the community board is asking for a different site that the applicant also controls. So I'm just trying to understand
Yeah.
How to rationalize this, and I'm just trying to understand if the School Construction Authority provide an answer to the department about their thinking on a school at this site?
Um, we, we let the, uh, School Construction Authority know about the application, um, and we'll have the applicant speak more to the discussions with the S C A, um, but I'm happy to also follow up
So maybe this question for Chair, just that, that, I mean, it, it seems like the applicant representing another agency's perspective is not, I think, what I'm asking about. It's really getting the agency's perspective, um, and so I don't know if we can follow up, because that was one of the significant commitments as part of the Domino project was, we'll open up a site potentially for a school if S C A decides they need one. So I think it'd be helpful to understand S C A's thinking about why they're going to pass on a valuable piece of land in North Brooklyn.
We'll, we'll get it. Okay, uh, Commissioner Goodrich.
I'm more of a, just a very general question. Um, with tall buildings that have a lot of glass on the facade, on the external part, we know that it often results in birds, bird deaths, because they can't see the glass. And I was just wondering, there are so many different things that a lot of architects and developers have designed with green buildings and, you know, different kinds of things. Has there, is there anything new that has been developed to prevent that with these tall buildings that have a lot of glass in the exterior like this one?
Um, my understanding is there are, there is material to help prevent bird deaths, but, um, I'm, uh, not familiar with what materials being using, being used on this site. Um, I'm happy to share that with the applicant if they want to speak to the kind of materials that they're using, um, for sustainability purposes.
Yeah, I think of that when I see very tall buildings, so that would be great to know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, I was just going to, um,
reiterate at this point what Commissioner Mann said, that it would be great if School Construction Authority themselves could come and speak to us and answer questions about what about this site was not desirable, or whether they're in fact in discussions about some other site that's more. I think that we're all concerned about the opportunities. School Construction and the Department of Ed, of Education have spoken many times about the fact that they're always looking for sites, and both the City Council and others went to a lot of agony trying to get a site for them. So finding out why the site isn't going to work now is something that I'm interested in hearing from them.
I think it's a fair request. We will pose it to the School Construction Authority. Um, well, they're, they're more than invited, more than welcome to be here, but we'll also see what, what sort of response we can get, and I'll share that with, uh, the commission.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I had, I had two quick questions. One was, um, thank you so much for, eh, passing along our request for specific questions to the applicant. I'm assuming that there's nothing new that you can share with us at this point, but I just want to make sure that in the list you guys included, um, the status of the community benefits agreement. Is that included? Yes?
Uh, yes, I did include.
Wonderful, thank you. And then the other question is, so I will ask the applicant, uh, at the hearing, uh, the response to the Borough President's recommendations, but, um, but I'm wondering if you can share, and I don't know if you've had a chance to discuss this internally, but where do you see, I mean, the, the Borough President is recommending, um, diversifying and expanding mixed-use income housing through UAP. And so this is an interesting case study where I would actually like to understand what the opportunity is in that regard, and so I'm wondering if, if you can share your thoughts in terms of, of whether that should be considered here.
Um, so the, the text as written does not, it writes in, um, a, the, the equivalent of UAP affordability for the exempted residential floor area. That's within the text that was proposed. Um, and although it does not say explicitly UAP, uh, it does, it, uh, mirrors the UAP levels of affordability for the exempted floor area of residential, um, that is being reallocated from other sites. Um, is that, does that answer the question, or?
That's helpful, yeah, and thank you. I, I appreciate your insight. I'm, I'm going to look deeper into this, but, but would love to hear kind of your, the department's basically position on this, because it sounds to me that if there is an opportunity here, we should, we should follow through, but thank you. I, I appreciate your insight on this.
Uh, and just also a clarifying, um, point on the first question. We did, um, we did note the commitments made from the Domino rezoning, and they're, uh, having them update on that, on those commitments. Okay, just clarifying, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
One last question about the community benefits agreement. That was not a part of the approval process, was it?
Uh, the agreement's made outside of the, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether it's appropriate, given that it was not a part of this approval here at this level, and it was not a part of the approval process of the council, it was outside the approval process, how and in what way we want to get involved in discussing whether the terms of that have been met, not met. So that's maybe something you want to talk to, to the General Counsel's Office later on about.
Um, and I should also specify, there are, uh, some of the, uh, requirements due to their environmental impact, um, assessment as well, that I believe were, were included in the restrictive declaration, um, but I'm happy to follow up and make sure to answer your question, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, all right, we're going to pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
The ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendments, UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Derek Jasmine.
Hi, Derek.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. This application was certified on April seventh, twenty twenty-five, and is now back for a pre-hearing. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development in the Astoria neighborhood of Queens, Community District One, to facilitate the development of a new thirteen-story mixed-use residential and commercial building with one hundred and six thousand eight hundred total square feet, containing six thousand five hundred square feet of ground-floor commercial retail, six thousand seven hundred square feet of community facility space, one hundred and sixty-seven airs units, and four, four thousand nine hundred square feet of open space accessible to residents. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from existing R five C one-two and R five zoning districts to C four-five and C four-two-A zoning districts, a zoning text amendment to MAP M I H with option one, and a UDAP designation for project approval and the disposition of city-owned land. This application was certified on April seventh, and on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, Queens Community Board One voted twenty-three in favor, ten against, and one abstaining. A recommendation of approval with the following conditions: removal of block five eighty-seven, Lot forty-three, located at thirty-two fourteen Thirty-first Street from the rezoning area, as well as limiting the proposed C four-five zoning district to the east side of Thirty-first Street. On June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the Queensborough President held a hearing on this application, and on July eighth, provided a recommendation of approval outlining the following conditions: that there should be a minimum thirty percent goal to include minority and women-owned firms, hiring of local residents, and working with locally-based organizations and community groups for outreach and job fairs when hiring, and contracting for this project, and that there should be quarterly reporting for these hiring initiatives to Borough President and council member until the goal has been reached, and that the applicant should work with the Department of Parks and Recreation to ensure that the rear yard can be open to the public, and that the open space maintains similar hours of operation and rules as surrounding publicly available open space. And this concludes my presentation. I'm ready for questions.
Great, thank you. We're going to pick this one up on Wednesday, um, with the applicant, unless there's any questions now. Okay, thank you very much. We will see this one on Wednesday. Madam Secretary.
The tenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendments, UDAP designation, project approval, dispositions of city-owned properties, site selection, acquisition, and a city map amendment in Queens Community Districts one and two. Our presenter is Hee Kyung Yang.
All right, Hee Kyung.
Hi. Oh, oops, too fast. Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Hee Kyung Yang. I am the project lead for the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan. It's good to see you. My team and I are excited to be back in front of the commission to share updates on the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan, a vision for the next ten years of growth, opportunity, and transformation of the neighborhood. Today, we'll walk through a refresher of the proposal, an environmental review, and provide updates on the public review process so far. The city is proposing a series of land use actions in the Long Island City neighborhood to support and facilitate the implementation of goals and objectives of One M I C, a neighborhood plan that is subject of a community planning process to help define and implement a long-term vision for Long Island City. There are three main reasons why the neighborhood plan is happening now: to address the need for affordable housing, facilitate business growth, and the need for open space. On housing, Long Island City has been one of the fastest-growing neighborhoods in the city, with over twenty-one thousand homes constructed in the past two decades. While some income-restricted affordable housing has been created through tax incentive programs, current zoning does not mandate the creation of affordable housing in new buildings. On business growth, Long Island City is Western Queens' key industrial and commercial hub. It is centrally located and has excellent vehicular and transit infrastructure, making it an ideal location for businesses to grow and thrive. And on open space, as Long Island City continues to grow, new open space is needed to increase resiliency and support community well-being. With this neighborhood plan, we have the opportunity to create a resilient and continuous public waterfront. As proposed, uh, the LAC Neighborhood Plan, uh, is pro, projected to create close to fourteen thousand, oopsie, that's, mm, okay. As proposed, the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan is projected to create close to fourteen thousand seven hundred new homes, of which approximately four thousand three hundred will be permanently income-restricted and rent-regulated. The plan would also create nearly three point five million square feet of new floor area for commercial and community facility uses, and allow space to support approximately fourteen thousand four hundred new jobs in an area with many transit options that connect the neighborhood to essential services and employment opportunities. The following land use actions are proposed to encourage housing growth while requiring permanently affordable housing, enliven corridors with active ground-floor uses and streetscape improvements, and incentivize job growth in the neighborhood. We have the zoning map and zoning tax amendments, which are proposed to support the area's growth by applying M I H to the project area, expand opportunities for open space, and improve resiliency along the waterfront, and modify the existing special Long Island City, um, mixed-use district. As co-applicants to this application, HPD is seeking UDAA designation, UDAP project approval, and disposition to redevelop and improve city-owned land with a hundred percent affordable housing development. With co-applicants DCAST and EDC, we're seeking approval for acquisition, site selection, and disposition of non-residential city-owned property to improve access along the waterfront. Lastly, we're proposing city map amendments to improve circulation near the waterfront. The project area covers, um, the project area covers a fifty-four-block area in Western Queens. Most of the project area is located in Community District Two, and, uh, while a small portion of it is located in Community District One. I'm going to just go to the next slide to make sure we're in the right place, and we are not. Okay, so, um, I think we have a different presentation up, so can we?
You want to take, you want to take a two-minute recess?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Jess? This is Public Key.
I'm sorry.
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 Do you want me to take it for you?
Maybe I should wait until people look.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't that have a huge tan? This is hilarious.
I think it's the light in here. I think it's just in.
Maybe it's also the white glider.
From your hair.
Well, he just looks more casual than usual. So I've, I haven't seen, um, Papier. Me either. But my aunt saw when she was here, she said it was incredible. So that might be something that would be the same. A young person. Yes, younger people. Yeah, I mean, I loved, um, Operation Vincent, if you haven't seen it, it's great. I haven't seen it. The other one is the, um, the other one is the Schubert. Although there's a new, um, lead, I think. And there's some controversy about it. The one of the Schubert, too. At the Schubert? Uh, what's your name wrote it, the music, um, famous singer, um, been there a while. Madonna, Pacilla Loeb. No, no, um. Oh, my Lord, my Lord. Let's just do this. Just a guy, uh, 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 A, um, Alicia Keys. Oh, um, Hell's Kitchen. Hell's Kitchen. Trying to think of like young, really traditional, like Forty-second Street where everyone's tap dancing through everything. Yeah, which I love, but. Well, I love it too, but I'm thinking of a twenty-four-year-old. And I just can't, I, I don't know.
I think we're ready. Um, I'm just gonna say next slide because that's my back.
Okay, we're gonna come back, uh, we're back in from recess. Hee Kyung, welcome back.
Thank you.
I think we may have the right materials now.
Correct.
And it will allow you to proceed.
Great.
So let's give, uh, our back office here a second to get you the right slide.
Okay, we're gonna go to next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, good. Uh, next slide. Okay, so the project area covers fifty-four-block area in Western Queens. Most of the project area is located within Community District Two, uh, while a small portion is located within Community District One. The proposed rezoning area focuses on the primary, primarily industrial areas, um, south of, uh, Nite's Queensbridge House Campus and west of Court Square Neighborhood. Next slide. To create this neighborhood plan, uh, proposal in partnership with Councilmember Julie Wan, we've held twenty-one public meetings, hearing concerns and desires from over eight, um, eighteen-hundred attendees. These conversations were led to the following five goals: one, create more housing for people at a range of income levels; two, create a connected resilience and accessible waterfront from Gantry Plaza State Park to
Existing pedestrian space at Jackson Avenue and Forty Sixth Avenue with new trees, plant beds, and shaded structures. Additionally, we're continuing to collaborate with DOT and Perks to explore the potential to expand open space under the Queensborough Bridge. Next slide. Lastly, on strategies to provide additional school seats. The proposed actions would generate additional school seat needs. The city and SCA monitor the need over time and direct resources through their five-year capital planning process to the school subject districts with the most need. The SCA focuses on strategy to build schools and expand schools to add more space for students. The department has been working extensively with the SCA, partner agencies, and private developers on creating opportunities to achieve these deep goals. As we noted at certification, proactive conversations with developers within the project area are ongoing for opportunities to site schools. And through the proposed zoning text, assisting with school seating, the department proposes a school Floria exemption on private sites. Next slide. As part of this application, a draft environmental impact statement was prepared. DCP acting on behalf of the CPC as lead agency issued a notice of completion of a DEIS on April 18th. Where the DEIS does not identify significant adverse impacts, technical areas have been grayed out. Significant adverse impacts are identified for the category shown in green to the right. Mitigation measures are identified in the DEIS and will be further refined for the final environmental impact statement. Next slide. And to close, LIC has been through decades of planning and attempts at piecemeal rezoning. While land use updates since the 1990s have allowed much of the neighborhood to grow, the One LIC project area remains locked in place by decade-old regulations despite the city's housing shortage. The One LIC plan aims to meet the city's evolving needs and the needs of the neighborhood. While much of this presentation focused on the land use actions and the proposals that are part of the overall project, the plan also considers the need for capital investments and city commitments that are being deliberated throughout the public review process. We've been working across city agencies to respond to the ask of the multiple stakeholders that have interests in the health and viability of the growing LIC neighborhoods. We look forward to hearing from the public before you at Lindsay's public hearing. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Let me just a quick bit of housekeeping. Wednesday morning, when we reconvene.
Okay.
We will have a, we're not going to recover what you just did.
Right.
What will we do? Just for the benefit of the commission.
You will have a few minutes of me talking again. This is summary of the project, and then we'll have EDC and H3D just present on portions of their actions as part of this proposal.
Great, excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Goodrich.
There seems, thank you so much for that very comprehensive presentation. There seems to have been a split with the two community boards, one and two, where one voted a bit more overwhelmingly in favor and the other was more split. And I was wondering if you could provide a little bit of insight into why you think that may have been. I mean, it's not the same, you know, it's not the same, it wasn't, it's the same neighborhood, but it's not the same. I'm not as familiar with Queens, so.
That's okay. I think, I think one of the reasons is because Community Board Two, they had a working group that immediately after certification, they assembled a task group of maybe 12 folks, and they really focused on just analyzing the certificate, certification material. They had us come before them almost every week to ask questions, a deep dive into specific topics that they were interested in. And after the Community Board Two's working group meeting, they read out a summary to the entire board and where they had extensive discussion, but they came in understanding that this task force was focused on this particular project. And so there was more of a unanimous vote. With CB One, it was not as such. There, they did come to the same conclusion, but I think the task force, in a way, helped corral that unified voice from the community board.
Okay, that, that's really helpful to know.
Yeah.
My last question is, one, there, so they note about NICA in one of the recommendations, and I was wondering about that. You know, you have this huge neighborhood development, and essentially, I guess from their point of view, they're saying, how are we going to have this huge city investment in this neighborhood and then nothing, you know, substantial for the public housing in the neighborhood?
Uh huh.
And I was wondering, you know, they're asking for capital investment, and I was wondering if we have a little bit more information about that and about how, you know, this is a city project.
Uh huh.
And NICA is also city-owned, so it's not out of bounds, you know, for, you know, what they're asking. So I was wondering if we have any information about how public housing fits in when we have these neighborhood plans and if they get invested in, or if it's just basically everything else but the public housing?
That has come up top of mind. And also, we as, our development team and our, sorry, engagement team has been out, engaging with the NICA residents since day one. There has been in-depth conversations between NICA, city agencies, council member about what particular investments are right for, or are needed in Queensbridge, and that conversation is happening live. I do know that one of the biggest concerns that both the community board and the council member in our engagement have raised is the, the community center, Jacob Rees Community Center, and also the borough president has mentioned it as well. It's a center that I think provides all, all of us, sorry, all the residents, all the community to come together in one space, and they provide wonderful programs. So that is, that is one of the investments that they're looking into. But I can say that it is a proactive and live conversation that is happening today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mann.
Yeah, just asking another question, I think I asked at certification about the ConEd site, because it's a little bit of my obsession on this one. So it's, it's a 10-acre, 10-acre waterfront parcel that is zoned M1, that is primarily surface parking, which I can't think of another site like it in New York City. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if anybody at ConEd has, has discussed with the department any ability to advance, you know, the goals of this planning framework by actually engaging in a constructive conversation about the development site's future?
Not necessarily the development site's future, but I, definitely on the waterfront, which is, I guess, was part of the future of ConEd. They have come to the table, and we're having, sorry, active conversations on the goal of our neighborhood plan, which is to connect the north and the south, and so they've been quite willing to participate.
And I appreciate this not in the department's control to, to sort of instruct ConEd what to do about its future. I guess I just want to make sure that, that, you know, collectively, we think about the magnitude of that opportunity in particular, and we don't lose sight of it, given that, you know, we're focusing on this area, the site to the north is zoned for residential, the site to the south is zoned for residential. So they're a sort of donut hole of 10 acres, mostly parking, surrounded by future residential development along the waterfront in an area where we're trying to advance housing needs. So I just, you know, I don't know if, I assume they're not coming to the public hearing. I don't know if there's any ability for them, for the department to ask or encourage them to come, just so we can try to get a better handle on how they might participate in this conversation. And then the other questions I just had, and that's not so much a question, but that was a long-winded statement, but on, on the environmental impacts that were disclosed in the DEIS, are there any updates there that, that you might be able to provide on, on kind of status of mitigation discussions?
It's ongoing at this moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation and thanks so much for the memo. I really appreciated that. The maps were very useful, and your detailed responses were very useful as well. Thank you so much for that. Before I ask my questions, I just wanted to underscore and associate myself with Commissioner Mann's initial question. In addition to the site, the ConEd site, providing opportunities for redevelopment, this is an opportunity to secure environmental justice as well. And so in addition to perhaps reaching out to, or as you consider other agencies, I would also encourage you to think about reaching out to NICA and understand how can this potential redevelopment fit in with their larger strategy, and specifically talking about the Peak Coalition and the specific work that is happening on the redevelopment of peaker units, but, you know, understanding that this is a different type of infrastructure. I think that that would be the context or the spirit in which we could approach that. Having said that, so the first question has to do with the, the sites that are outside of the waterfront access plan, but heavily vulnerable to flooding. So the first question is, in response to question 14, which was a question where some of us were asking whether the impact of the improvements, of the proposed improvements on flooding have been mitig, have been modeled, just to be able to see the before and after in terms of, you know, what are the areas that are currently vulnerable that wouldn't be vulnerable with the proposed interventions that you're suggesting? And so I understand your response, but I, I guess the specific question is, have you modeled what is going to be the impact of the proposed infrastructure and the flooding conditions? What areas are currently expected to flood that will not flood? Just so that we can understand, you know, in other words, what is going to be the, how will the areas that are currently mapped in question 13 and 12 going to be sort of like mitigated? Does that make sense?
I'm looking through the memo.
Okay, okay.
And you're asking if the modeling has been done for the, for the after, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You know, whether the pink, purple, and orange polygons that are listed under question 12 will actually be eliminated once you build the proposed infrastructure. Has that been modeled?
At this moment, I'm just going to pass the time over to, is it okay? Yeah. To Emily Sun at our CFP.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Emily Sun. I'm with the Climate and Sustainability Planning Team. I'm glad you liked the responses that we were able to provide to you. So we have not modeled hydrologically what the impact of the waterfront access plan and the design elements there are. It would be a difficult undertaking, given that we don't know what the specific elements of like site-level design would be at the moment. For instance, building-level mitigation measures, floodproofing. So we've not done that.
But you've, you've laid that out. You've laid out what are the interventions that you are proposing, so, and, and some of them are not building-by-building specific. To your credit, some of them are, you know, contextual. So all I'm saying is that, you know, it's, I understand if the constraints don't allow you to do it, but it's, I just got, I, I'm just highlighting that it's difficult to see whether or not, what's going to be the impact if you haven't modeled it.
In terms of taking areas out of the floodplain?
Correct, yes.
Okay, understood.
The, the other question built on that, which is, so, another question, and again, very much appreciative of the information that you provided, that the table under question 12 is super useful. And you, one of the things that jumped at me is that a lot of the areas that are heavily vulnerable are outside of the waterfront access plan. So one question that I was asking was whether the treatment that you were going to provide for the waterfront district was going to be the same in other areas? And, and, and I think that the general response that was that yes, that you were going to treat, for example, the corridors, which is a sub-district where a lot of these areas lay, in the same way. Unfortunately, while that sounds great, unfortunately, the waterfront access plan is, is going to be, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the primary ways in which you're going to secure that there's consistency in terms of how the waterfront mitigation strategies are going to be implemented. So, so the question that I want to know is whether there, the areas that are inside the coastal zone boundary, which would be eligible to be included in the waterfront access plan, can still be included? Can the waterfront access plan boundaries be extended to include some of the areas that are, according to your maps, also vulnerable, but currently are outside, therefore are not going to be, you know, governed by the same level of mitigation? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I can provide a more detailed response later. I think there are some zoning elements about where waterfront zoning applies that really come into play here with the waterfront access plan.
Yeah, yeah, and I think you said, or the, the person who presented last time said that you were going to, the, part of the, part of the proposal is to extend, to some extent, to the extent possible, some of the zoning provisions that apply to the waterfront sub-district across the proposed, the, the project site, right? So, so, so I, I'm just specifically asking whether the waterfront action plan can be expanded to include the areas that are currently outside. I have another question. So in the response about the consistency, there's, which I appreciate, there's the assurance that the city is going to use for the publicly-owned sites, some of the mitigation strategies that the city uses in other places of the city, which I guess answers the question about consistency, but at the same time, it misses the point on the fact that this is an industrial, mixed industrial residential now commercial district, meaning you shouldn't use the same types of mitigation strategies that let's say you would use in a commercial neighborhood in an area that has and will continue to have some industrial activity. In other words, in addition to mitigating storm surge and flooding, you want to mitigate potential dislodgment of chemicals, et cetera, in, in the case of severe weather. And so that's just kind of like a comment to encourage this city to build on some of the research that you've historically done, this department specifically, with the open industrial uses study, with the resilient industrial neighborhoods, where there were specific recommendations to be used in neighborhoods like this one that right now are not surfacing. And so I, I just want to further understand, how are you planning to determine the consistency of even just the publicly-owned sites in terms of the mitigation strategies, but specifically tailored or under the lens of a mixed industrial, commercial, residential community like this one?
Okay, yeah, understood. Thank you so much for those comments, and we can get back to you on.
And if, if possible, I would love to follow up with your team and understand, you know, how you're thinking about it. I, I think that this is, this is a great opportunity to bring all of that research back and then understand, you know, what is the type of infrastructure that could be envisioned to, to meet the requirements of a density of this scale?
Yep, absolutely. I think that would be a great conversation as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. I was next. So, thank you again for your responses. Hey, Kyung. On question two, I mean, I know this was something that we all questioned, which is the building on Forty-Fifth Street that's city-owned, that EDC is looking to RFI recently.
Yes.
I'm not understanding the statement at the, at the end of the second paragraph, without competing, without competing public interest. Okay, so the question is, why can't we have this building 100% affordable? And at the end of that paragraph, it's, with competing public interest, it is challenging to, challenging to commit to 100% affordable housing on the site without knowing how that may impact other public amenities and community goals. I am perplexed by that statement, because we shouldn't let the amenities and community goals dictate the housing that's needed. And the city has, most recently in the last couple of years, committed to 100% affordable housing on sites that are publicly owned. So I'm having a difficult time understanding why, if in fact, housing may be projectors for the site. And I understand the RFI is out there, the RFI will talk to what they think needs to be out there. Why wouldn't we commit to 100% affordable housing on that site?
I think for, for the statement that was shared in the memo, I am trying to think, I think we were trying to lean towards the process is RFI currently, and that the 100% affordable housing could be something that comes in the future, but not currently in this application.
I, I do understand that. I just think that this is a really missed opportunity to provide, or to at least guide the outcome of the RFI by indicating upfront that we 100% affordable housing if housing is presented. I don't think that's at all challenging.
Yeah.
And I think EDC needs to address that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Marin. EDC will be here, and they'll talk about the, the process of the request for information that's out there. I think at this point during this planning process, we've been hearing a lot of different thoughts on, on this site. So, so the RFI is an attempt to sort of like further flesh out what those community facilities and community-serving uses can go here. So it does not, you know, it, it does not limit, you know, the site from being developed for housing and later on. So this is an early step, and as, as ULEUR goes on, I think we will hear more from the, the council member and what her thoughts are on here. And so, so I think at this point, we're still, we're weighing, you know, all the options and the possibilities at the site. So we've, it's a huge, huge property.
I do realize that, but, but EDC is going to dictate, basically, what's going to go there. I mean, I understand everybody's participating, but at the end of the day.
No, I mean, the RFI is, is not a binding, you know, it really is just to get ideas at this point, and, and EDC has been collaborator on, on this particular site. And I think when we get to the councilwoman, if she wants housing here, we will, the city will find ways to do it. And, and the zoning that we're proposing at the site does allow for housing and other community-serving uses, so, so we are not, we're not shutting ourselves out from, from.
I understand that. I just want to state that I truly believe if this is a public site, this should be 100, whatever housing presented for consideration should be 100% affordable, and we should not change that mantra, because this site is in a different location.
Yep, Julie noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we're going to pick this up on Wednesday. Thank you very much, Hye Kyung, and to all of the members of the team here for all of your great work. Okay, let's move on. Madam Secretary.
Okay. Future votes, future votes for consideration. On Wednesday, July 30th, staff have prepared reports for Broadway Junction Station City Map Amendment, JFK Conduit Logistics Center Demapping, and the Hillside Swimming Club. Next, post-hearing follow-ups. First, we have Jamaica Neighborhood Plan and Station Plaza Jamaica City Map Changes, which had a public hearing at the July 2nd public meeting. I'll note there were public comments and testimonies included in your weekend materials. We are joined today by Queens Director Lynn Zoom, Dylan Marr from DEP, and on Zoom, Denise Mendez from DOT for a special presentation.
Great, welcome. Welcome back, Lynn. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yes. Shall we? Okay. All right. Good afternoon again. Lynn Zhang, Director of Queens Office of City Planning. We're back here today for a second post-hearing presentation. The Jamaica Neighborhood Plan was served by March 20th, and the City Planning Commission held its public hearing on July 2nd. In our first post-hearing presentation, we had discussed open space strategies in the study area and went through the proposed densities along the southern corridors. Today, we'll dive into two topic areas that have come up during the ULEUR process, the planning of busways along key commercial corridors, and infrastructure improvements in Jamaica. We are joined virtually by Denise Mendez, Assistant Commissioner for Transit Development, and Andrew Arches, Queens Borough Planner from the Department of Transportation, and from the Department of Environmental Protection, Dylan Marr, traveling all the way from Queens today, Chief of Staff in the Department of Environmental Protections Bureau of Sustainability. So they will provide a pre-presentation to the commission, and will be available to answer any follow-up questions you may have. So with that, I believe the next slide. I will turn this now over to Dylan Marr from DEP.
Great, thank you, Dylan, for being here with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Commissioners, thank you for having me to speak today about DEP's investments in and around the proposed Jamaica rezoning. I'm going to start off talking about the sewer system in Jamaica, and then some of the challenges the area can face, followed by what we are doing and plan to do in and around the area. Next slide. Oh, sorry. Okay, great, thanks. Jamaica and much of Tallis, Queens, is served by a separate sewer system, which means that the sanitary flow and stormwater flow travel through different pipes. This is different from the majority of this city, where, which is served by a combined sewers, where sanitary and stormwater flow in the same pipe. Separate systems, sewer systems, have the benefit of reducing overall combined sewer overflows into the waterways, and also increase the importance of planning for growth so that the sanitary system can support that growth. I'll speak more about that in a couple of slides. DEP recognizes that Jamaica and Tallis, Queens face stormwater flooding issues, not unlike other parts of the city. Stormwater flooding is particularly an issue when large amounts of rain happen in a burst that is too strong for the sewers to handle. DEP is making important investments to reduce stormwater flooding in Jamaica and Tallis, Queens, which I'll speak to in a few slides. Groundwater challenges and, and flooding can be an issue across the city, and DEP understands that there is a challenge with groundwater in Jamaica and Tallis, Queens. We've met multiple times with Councilmember Williams and had town halls to provide information to the public on groundwater and how to deal with it, and how to address it on their private property. Please note that groundwater flooding is different from stormwater flooding. Groundwater flooding happens in areas with high groundwater, and especially when these areas see multiple days of heavy rain that saturate the ground, while stormwater flooding is more typical for, you know, heavy bursts, heavy, heavy, often short bursts of rain. Oh, sorry, was I bad? Sorry. The city has a toolkit to combat flooding. We, we have a really all-of-the-above strategy, using gray infrastructure, green infrastructure, real-time monitoring, and regulation to help protect the whole city. And I'll speak specifically to Jamaica investments and examples throughout the next couple of slides. Sewers transport sanitary, sanitary waste to our resource recovery facilities, and are the backbone also of our stormwater management system. Our 10-year capital plan includes $9 billion in investment in sewers across the city. In Jamaica, we announced $315 million investment in sanitary sewers earlier this year as part of the city of the US. And of course, this is a separate system, so this is specifically about the sanitary sewers that support Jamaica. The investment will specifically serve the rezoning area and support growth in downtown Jamaica, where much of the density is planned. As part of the investment, we have completed a drainage study of the 150th Street Chunk Sewer, which serves downtown Jamaica. This is, this is, this drainage study is ahead of schedule for typical rezonings, because we understand the importance of drainage to support the growth in this area. Typically, a drainage study of sewers is done after a rezoning is finalized, so that DEP has confidence in the density and population expected in the area. Our plan is to increase the capacity of the 150th Street Chunk Sewer, and we have sized, and we have the size and dimensions of the sanitary pipe that will serve the area, and this will happen in phases. And the first phase will start near Jamaica Bay and move its way up towards downtown Jamaica, which I think is over two miles. So it's going to happen in different sections, and this $315 million is going, is funding those sections. No phases. The Tallis, Queens flood mitigation. So Jamaica, along with larger Tallis, Queens area, also is a focus of stormwater investments. Post-World War II development in Tallis, Queens outpaced storm sewer build-out, which left parts of the area with inadequate storm sewer infrastructure. For the past decade-plus, DEP and DDC have been working together on the Tallis, Queens storm sewer build-out, which, with a total commitment of $2.6 billion to upgrade and install storm sewers across the, and related infrastructure across the area. These investments are critical to alleviating stormwater challenges that the area can face. Along with gray infrastructure, we have green infrastructure in our toolkit. So green infrastructure catches and absorbs stormwater at the source on streets and sidewalks before it goes, gets into our sewers, which provides relief to the storm sewer system. So instead of our plants managing the stormwater, or the stormwater being commuted to our waterways, it's happening, it's being controlled at the source, and it can, will infiltrate into the ground, or also sometimes be slowed down so that the sewer can catch up and then take on what's held in our green infrastructure. Below is a picture of Rufus, Rufus King, oh, sorry. The first picture is a side of a curbside rain garden that absorbs stormwater from the street. So you can see there's a curb cut there, and the stormwater just flows in there, and then the, the water will infiltrate into the ground, and there's engineered soil so that can kind of hold it within the asset, and then it infiltrates into the ground naturally. Then on the bottom, you have Rufus King Park, which is in Jamaica, or at least the Jamaica rezoning area. This is where, this is typical of, of our onsite practices, where we put them on parks or schools, and also we work with NICA, to store larger amounts of water, where we'll bring water from the streets and, and also onsite to manage it in a larger kind of asset underneath that turf field. So in Jamaica, we're planning to construct green infrastructure in Rufus King Park, Detective Keith Williams Park, PS40, PS50, and we have more projects throughout Tallis, Queens, along with those. So Cloudburst, Cloudburst projects are another important tool that DEP is starting to use to manage stormwater and reduce flooding. Cloudburst projects use public property to manage large storms. These projects can be similar to green infrastructure projects, but they're intended to store larger amounts of water. These projects can be similar to green infrastructure projects, but they're intended to store larger amounts of water, so kind of a cloud burst. DEP is wrapping up completion on the first cloud burst project in the city. This is in Jama, this is in the South Jamaica Houses, which is really exciting. It's very close to completion. Um, and you can see the two pictures here. In the picture here, you can see a rendering of uh, of a renovated and sunken basketball court on the top. And you can see there's, there's seating there, um, which is, they're using this, the, the sunken elevation of the basketball court as seating. And in dry wa, ba, dry weather, the basketball court um, just be used for recreation. But in heavy storms, it can fill up with excess rainwater to reduce local flooding and then release the water when the, when the sewer system had, had a chance to catch up. Um, and there's more going on there. This is just a very visual component of the overall South Jamaica Houses, uh, cloud burst project. So FloodNet Sensors, we also leverage technology to provide real time monitoring of street flooding across the city. Um, so these sensors right here will, will tell what, if there's flooding and also give a, a approximation of the elevation of flooding on the street. Um, we have nine of these sensors in Jamaica right now. We have over 240 across the city with a goal of getting um, of installing up to 500 by the end of this year. And anyone can go to floodnet.nyc for a real time map of the conditions and locations of the um, the sensors. Um, okay, so DEP understands that groundwater is an issue in Tallis, Queens and other parts of the city. While managing groundwater is not um, actively in DEP's jurisdiction, we recognize the importance of better understanding and planning for the issue. We have partnered with the US Geological, Geological Survey to uh, study groundwater in Brooklyn and Queens. The study will last through 2007 and provide a, a, a better and more detailed um, uh, vision of the, of a map of groundwater conditions uh, in Queens and Brooklyn. In addition, um, to our, our work with the USGS, Intro 1067 was just passed by City Council on June 30th of this year. DEP will work with community based organizations to help properties um, and homeowners in um, Community Board 12 and 13 that are affected by groundwater. And I'll go over a couple of our regulations in the next two slides, and that's, that'll be it. Along with DEP's investments in Jamaica, the private sector will play an important role in ensuring that the area has capacity to support growth. Every site, every site connecting to our sewer needs to submit a sewer connection permit uh, before being granted a CBO from the Department of Buildings. Uh, sewer connection permit ensures that there is sewer capacity for the new development. It's not uncommon in Jamaica and also other parts of the city um, for DEP to require developments to expand local sewer infrastructure for a block and sometimes up to eight or more blocks. And that's where they will um, build a new sewer essentially that will support their development, but also the overall expected uh, zone development that is along that corridor of, of the pipe. So they're, they're not just upgrading for themselves, they're all upgrading for the zoning so that the street does not need to be um, torn up again when another big building comes. Um, also, properties uh, have the ability to install water reuse systems onsite. This is becoming increasingly common for large developments. These systems reuse water and discharge less flow to our sewers. In addition, the properties get a rate discount on the systems, um, and they also consume less water. So it's a win win for the city in reducing flows into our sewers and also reducing costs for developers. And finally, the unified stormwater rule also plays an important role in having the private sector reduce impact on the city infrastructure. All properties need to comply with this rule, and depending on the property's size, it may need to install systems that prevent some stormwater from ever entering the storm, the sewer system. These investments are often in the form of green infrastructure such as green roofs, um, which hold stormwater and also help green the overall area. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. This is a helpful context um, for us. Um, let me see if you could. Okay, before I even ask a question, Jasmine wants to, to say something, so I'm gonna let her do that. Go ahead, Jasmine.
Pardon, we actually have DOT online who's gonna finish out with their presentation, and then we'll do a joint.
Do them together. Okay, let's do that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold for the moment. We'll go to DOT and then we'll take all the questions together. Thanks, Jasmine. Okay, DOT, welcome.
Thank you so much.
DEP, don't go far. Okay.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Denise Mendez, Assistant Commissioner for Transit Development. I'm joined uh, by my colleague Andrew Orsayzy from New York City DOT, um, Queens Bar Commissioner's Office. So thank you so much again for the opportunity to present alongside our colleagues at City Planning as well as DEP on the Jamaica rezoning and our coordination efforts to date. We are pleased to support this important effort again and sort of really sharing how our recent and upcoming investments in street safety and transit can really help to realize the goals of a more connected, accessible, and vibrant downtown Jamaica. Next slide. And so DOT and the MTA work very closely together to make buses faster and more reliable. Part of that is through investments uh, in uh, redesigning our public right of way, uh, but also uh, in the MTA sort of looking at improvements to their service as well. These are key uh, to the city's commitment to sustainable and equitable mobility. Uh, with one of the largest bus priority programs in the nation, DOT has really implemented over 160 miles of bus lanes, uh, which include six dedicated busways uh, and uh, transit signal priority at thousands of intersections throughout the city. That really helped to see real improvements, whether it be improving uh, travel times for buses and helping riders, uh, New Yorkers get to work, get to uh, school, and/or their appointments, et cetera. Though we've not fully recovered from COVID, ridership is certainly on the rise and uh, we're, you know, hoping to see sort of that trend continue and move forward in the right direction for more sustainable options. We're getting around. Uh, we're also continuing to upgrade and enhance the rider experience, particularly within DOT's right of way, uh, looking at enhancements and investments in shelters, benches, leaning bars, and also real time arrival signs across the city. And so what goes into planning bus lanes? Next slide. And so when planning bus lanes and busways across the city and amongst other factors, DOT looks very closely at bus performance, working closely with data from the MTA around bus speed, ridership, and frequency of service along with the street and network context, including information around crash history as well as um, congested corridors as well. We prioritize those investments, we try to as best as we can, in low income communities and communities of color through DOT's established priority investment areas. This really helps us to ensure that the investments are actually in areas that actually can benefit from and need those services and improvements the most. Uh, we often sort of pair this with robust engagement uh, in ensuring that all stakeholders are brought along in the process and ensuring that we take those considerations into feedback before we think about sort of the broader plans. And so DOT has a range of tools to improve bus service. Some of the examples are illustrated on the screen. These include dedicated bus lanes, and that can be curbside offset or center running, where there's like physically protected uh, bus, bus lanes. And it can also include busways, which is one type of uh, bus priority infrastructure where we restrict um, moving uh, look uh, through traffic uh, as well. Um, and many other features to make bus stops safer, more accessible, and the bus movement uh, throughout the city more optimized through signal priority, et cetera. Importantly, each corridor is different, and so we tailor the tools to meet the local needs. Uh, next slide. And so a little bit more, actually, right before that. I think we're missing, yeah, busways, perfect. Um, so just a little bit more details about busways. They really work to deliver meaningful travel time savings uh, with relatively modest infrastructure on DOT's end. Among other factors, we use ridership numbers to determine the locations and the hours of busways. We really work to prioritize uh, buses, trucks, emergency vehicles, and other accessory ride um, movement to allow for travel along the corridor. Local access needs is certainly important, and we try to balance those needs and allowing for turns on and off the corridor um, to get access to that specific block. What we've seen so far is that busways have delivered faster service and more dependable reliability in terms of the um, arrivals of buses. Uh, and that also translates into folks being able to plan with appropriate time to further commute rather than having to add additional buffer time. Uh, we've also seen uh, injury crashes reduction as well, and also um, this helps to translate the benefits beyond sort of bus service. Like this is seeing a, a drop in crashes and helping to make the corridor safer overall. So across New York City busways, we've seen bus speeds on average increase by 34%, um, up 60% in some corridors in some directions. Uh, and then also injury crashes, again, dropping by about a third on average, and close to about 60% fewer on 14th Street. So that is sort of wildly successful, and obviously, like, you know, these are areas that we, that have sort of that dense uh, nature of activity. Next slide. And so downtown Jamaica is very unique. It's, it's one of the city's busiest and most essential tra, tra, transit hubs outside of the Manhattan CBD with Critical Subway and Long Island Railroad connections. This busway, um, the Jamaica and Archer Avenue Busway serve over 250,000 riders every day, every weekday. Uh, and on weekends, Jamaica Avenue carries up to three times more riders than 14th Street in Manhattan. That is also another busway. So to put this into perspective in terms of the scale that we're seeing in terms of riders and folks that are using both of those corridors, these two corridors carry the same number of daily riders on the entire Miami Dade Authority Bus Network, which is sort of the 15th largest transit system in the US. And so Jamaica and Archer Avenue are actually carrying quite a lot of riders that are serving uh, the Jamaica area, but also serving as critical connections to other parts of the city. And so since we've implemented uh, the busways back in 2021, DOT has continued to monitor and refine designs to improve safety, clarify vehicle movements, and really think about uh, access needs uh, supporting local businesses. And so we adjusted busway hours to 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM uh, to match ridership patterns. And while supporting commercial activity, we've updated signage to improve driver clarity in terms of specific turn movements. And we've added about 100 needed parking spaces to expand loading zones and better serve local businesses. Next slide. Since the implementation, we've also done some more qualitative analysis to, and quantitative analysis. Starting with the quantitative pieces, we looked at bus speeds along the corridor on Jamaica Avenue. Those speeds are up, have improved by up to 40%. We've seen some outpacing of ridership growth along the corridor uh, for bus riders compared to Queens in general. Almost three times the amount uh, in terms of ridership increases, and that amounts to about 2,600 riders every day. Uh, in addition, that this uh, bus priority uh, infrastructure has really supported. And we've also seen a reduction in injury crashes a, along the corridor, about 30%. Uh, it is a visionary priority corridor, and we've seen significant improvements on that end. We also want to understand sort of changes or sent, incentives and folks, how folks uh, use the corridor. Uh, so we conducted a uh, intercept survey in the spring of 2022 to look at shoppers and how they uh, use the corridor. Shoppers generally reported either more enjoyable and a welcoming corridor. Uh, they, we've also seen either an increase um, in foot traffic along Jamaica. And so that, the, that tells us that the busway has not necessarily deterred folks from getting access to uh, Jamaica in general. DOT, again, will continue to look at additional analysis and monitor to further assess changes in traffic patterns. And that's something that we have worked very closely with Councilmember Williams and sort of thinking about more broader assessments of um, traffic patterns in the area, downtown Jamaica area. So in closing. Next slide. Again, DOT is committed to supporting these designs, uh, street designs that really help to make it more connected and accessible downtown Jamaica. We continue to track, again, the performance of existing busways, but also looking to identify opportunities to enhance operations where possible. DOT is fairly responsive whenever we put in a project and we understand if some things may not be working, we look to make adjustments uh, accordingly. And so we're working, again, closely very much with DCP as well as the community partners to ensure transportation investments support the area's long term vision, uh, understanding that with increased density, it requires sort of a need for supporting transportation options. With that, uh, that includes a $78 million investment uh, in terms of capital project and design. It was currently in design to bring street create, streetscape upgrades to enhance the transit experience, but also the public realm experience that really celebrates Jamaica's historic and cultural identity. And so again, you know, we see sort of zoning and land use in the transportation infrastructure investments is sort of structurally linked, and we see the opportunity to continue to support um, this effort. Thank you for your time. Looking forward to questions.
Great, thank you very much. And let me just uh, take a moment to thank both DEP and DOT for being here. We really appreciate it. We know that you all have a lot going on, and this is uh, an important initiative for uh, the city and in a way that also significantly impacts both of your agencies, so we're very grateful you're here. Um, let me start with um, with a few questions, and I'm sure there will be questions from others too. Um, my, my questions, um, I'm gonna start with DEP, uh, if you don't mind. So appreciate the background, the connection between the stormwater flooding versus the groundwater flooding and how um, you know, in a heavy rain, the storm sewers can get overwhelmed, flooding streets, homes, businesses. That's the stormwater, and you have your naturally high groundwater in Jamaica, which, you know, when saturated, finds a path into homes and basements and things like that, which I know is constant frustration um, in, in this area. The, the question that I have is, is a really basic one about if you had a combined sewer in Jamaica or if you had a storm sewer that was able to adequately handle all of the rain that was flowing in a particular moment, might not the groundwater still be an issue in Jamaica? Way, uh, you know, so let's just put the, the, the separate or combined sewers, all of the pipes and systems that the city can put in place here. Is there a way to address that fundamental issue of the, of the uh, the groundwater issue that is present here?
Um, so the, if there, if the storm sewers or if a combined sewer were, you know, built out for a hundred year storm, which is exceedingly expensive for DEP and, and not um, what, not the way that we plan our current, our sewers, um, there still would be groundwater flooding because the groundwater is really coming up from um, the, the, the groundwater, right? So it's, it's not just within the sewers. Um, and we have, we do engage the public um, in uh, getting information now on how to deal with groundwater. And also, we've, we've done giveaway kid, giveaway sessions at town halls to help further um, that and, that um, uh, distribution of information where we use um, sensors, right? So like sort of groundwater sensors that people will put in their basements as an alert so that they can be alerted of this. Um, and, and they can, and also some pumps. And so we try to get as much information as possible about this. Um, yeah, and you know, as, as I noted in this, in the presentation, that it's not current, that groundwater is not currently um, part of DEP's remit. So it's not in, it's not in our um, uh, in our charter.
Okay, one of the things that is within your charter is the sanitary sewers. And as you noted, there's a $315 million investment in sanitary sewers in Jamaica that is already uh, committed. Um, tell us a little bit about what the uh, the drainage study of that 150th Street Trunk Sewer uh, has revealed and what it will, what it will mean uh, for the future here.
Yeah, sure. So um, the, so the, the drainage study looked at the 150th Street Sewer, which I'm sure you guys cannot um, necessarily envision in a map like I can, where that's coming, but it's coming down from kind of 150th Street and then it, and then further down towards um, a sewer that curves along um, Jamaica Bay and then leads into the Jamaica Waste Butter Resource Recovery Facility. So it stated that there, there is a need to increase the trunk, that trunk sewer. So just to be clear, a trunk sewer, you think of a tree as the trunk is the big thing holding up the tree, and then you have the branches, which could be called lateral sewers. Um, so the trunk um, needs to be increased to support current and future growth to, to have capacity for, you know, maybe like the, the Super Bowl flush, right? Where you think about that time when there's a huge flush, it's not every day, but you know, extremely uh, high flush. Uh, currently, the system can support the rezoning, but there needs, but we want to um, have extra capacity to be able to support the rezoning and, and kind of adjusting. have extra capacity to be able to support the rezoning and and kind of just in case moments. And it's showing that we have sections to build up, as I I think I I explained in the presentation where, you know, there we're going to start with sections closer to the bay and then build up in different phases towards Jamaica. Does that answer your question?
It does. Well, it helps. So if I heard you correctly, it sounds like the the hundred fiftieth street trunk today could accommodate the housing that is actually being proposed.
Yeah.
But you are also investing an additional three hundred fifteen million dollars to modernize and I guess to anticipate a Super Bowl like event or other issues. Is that did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, you heard that correctly. And also, the this expansion will also support the whole neighborhood. So it's not just going to support the whole neighborhood all the way down south towards towards the the bay. So it won't just support new developments in Jamaica, but it's also going to support communities down south towards Jamaica Bay.
Can you say a little bit more about the two point six four billion dollar program to provide flooding relief through the build out of the storm sewers?
Yeah, sure. Let me get to that page for any extra notes. Yeah, so this this was announced over ten years ago with the knowledge that southeast Queens had not had a so some areas of southeast Queens and Jamaica as part of southeast Queens never had storm sewers built, but they were separate. So they had a sanitary system, but they didn't have a storm system. And this is historically part of the quick growth post-World War Two that and the storm system not storm build out not catching up with that growth. And there's also areas that have undersized storm sewers. So this is this program is expanding undersized storm sewers, expanding trunks. So also the storm system has trunks to support the new kind of nodes of storm sewers that are being built out and expanded and then can be can have the storm flows sent to the trunks. So it's kind of a it's it's multi it's it's expanding trunks, it's expanding undersized areas and it's providing new stormwater management services that to areas that may not have had it before.
Okay, on the real time monitoring, so with the flood net sensors, the nine active sensors that you said were present in Jamaica, Hollis and Rosedale. What what do you what do you we do with that information? So you get an alert that there's a flooding event. What happens next?
Yeah, so so one, the public can get can can actually set up alerts where they can get an alert if there is is flooding. Not in Jamaica, but there I know there's a business owner in Gowanus who gets a notification if there's flooding sensed on the monitor and she will go to maybe put down flood protection barriers that she has for her for her for her business. In Jamaica, that could be similar. Also, DEP monitors these actively and will then send out crews depending on the the flooding and the extent of flooding and and, you know, the area of flooding. And then we also do after after action analysis to better understand was the flooding due to just to the intense storm? We also will check catch basins to see if catch basin cleaning has been an issue from B W S for our from our operations. And also to see if some of the catch basins were clogged. So sometimes there can be flooding and it can be due to leaves or debris being in the street, which there's also a shared responsibility with the public to clean eighteen inches from the curb. So that could be for leaves or from from debris. So we'll we try to analyze what what was the what was the cause of this? It's not just just a log that there was flooding there.
Okay, last question for me. Somebody who, you know, lives in Jamaica or is experienced flooding in Jamaica might look at the the confluence of events, the the high groundwater, the separated systems, maybe is aware is not aware of the all of the various component parts that you just mentioned, but might say, well, you know, there's a there's a big proposal to add a lot of housing here. What would what would you say to give comfort to somebody who would say, like, you know what, the system does not feel like it is able to handle the the water challenges today? How can you add a unit of housing, let alone thousands of units of housing? How how would you address that from DEP's perspective?
Sure. So there's kind of two components because it's a separate system. So with the sewer connection permits, DEP assesses if the area and the the pipes can take the flows. And we ask developers to upgrade certain parts of the sewer to be able to take those flows. So, you know, the city is taking on responsibility to upgrade these trunk sewers. And also at times, develop the developers who are benefiting from this, the rezoning will get to what will may need to increase the la the sewers that are connecting to our trunks. So it's kind of a shared responsibility, not just the main payers that are paying for the sewer, the sanitary upgrades. And then on the storm sewer side, the unified stormwater rule, which is from twenty twenty two, there were stormwater rules before that, but this was became more stringent and unified across the whole city that new properties all need to release stormwater more slowly, regardless of the size. And then properties that are larger, so if they're twenty thousand square feet or more and disturbing twenty thousand square feet of of impervious area. If I'm getting too technical, feel free to ask me more details. They need to build, they need to manage one point five inches of stormwater on site. So an inch and a half of stormwater that falls needs to be handled on site before it anymore can flow into the sewer. And DEP takes a strong preference towards green infrastructure practices as ways to manage that. So this is often fulfilled in the form of green roofs. So the green roof, DEP will have developers, engineers prove that their building will will prevent one point five inches across the whole the whole campus of the building from entering the sewer. So if you think about a couple of weeks ago, there was extremely heavy intense storm that I think the over was over two inches in one hour. In, you know, one and a half of those two inches should be managed on site. I mean, in a in a in a storm that's that intense, that quick, there may be some challenges and actually managing one point five right away and if it's a fifteen minute storm, but it's still going to manage a good chunk of that two inches of stormwater. So actually, in rezonings, the the new developments can reduce the amount of stormwater entering the system. So that's kind of a a real change in the dichotomy of of development and the way it's approached in the city where the development can actually reduce the stormwater entering the system because of the unified stormwater rule. And it's also often green, which has obviously has co-benefits.
So the buildings themselves are capturing a significant amount of water on their own site, so actually can can help to limit what is actually going into the ground or into the system.
Yeah, yeah, it's not always intuitive, but that's exactly correct.
Okay. And then and also, as it relates to the sanitary flows, DEP is evaluating with permits whether or not it can handle what is being proposed on a site by site basis. Is that correct?
Yes, we we have our sewer connection team evaluating every single permit that the we get. And in larger developments, we require developers to do more sophisticated analysis than if you know, for a one to four family home will will usually need to do a much less detailed analysis than a two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred unit building. They have to they will typically have to do a quite detailed analysis, looking at a larger portion of the sewer where they're connecting into to be sure that the whole the whole area where they're connecting can support the growth.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very helpful. Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi. Thank you for all your work. I really appreciate it. I have two unrelated questions for you. The first is part of the problem in the southern part of South Jamaica is the Jamaica Water Supply Company and the wells that are there is DEP. What is the relationship between the Jamaica Water Supply Company and DEP today?
So DEP acquired the wells there and those wells are not active currently.
Are we still pumping in order to keep the water table down?
We're not pumping, no. But we are studying with the USGS and what impacts, you know, the groundwater system is having, what the impacts are on the groundwater system and to understand where the, you know, the groundwater levels are at.
And I understand that DEP is not responsible for groundwater, but is the water table rising in parts of Jamaica because of the fact that we're not pumping that water any out anymore?
Well, the study that we're doing with the USGS is going to help better help us better understand that. There's also climate change where with increasing sea level, sea level rise, that's also impacting groundwater levels in in Queens and Brooklyn and also in Long Island. So we've spoken with colleagues in Long Island, looking at the impact of climate change and sea level rise on on groundwater levels there. And so that's also having an impact.
Well, Long Island has their own aquifer. That's not part of the aquifer that Jamaica Water Supply had tied into. Is that correct?
Yeah, but to to have a holistic understanding of groundwater issues in the area, I mean, with Long Island being just next door, we we do speak with them and also with the USGS, it's like a larger study that's looking at the whole the area and along with climate change.
So I understand when you're saying that part of Jamaica has no sanitary sewers. Well, has no stormwater sewers. And there was a part of Jamaica that still had outhouses, but those are gone now. Although in the Rockaways, there's still a few.
Okay.
But in the stormwater system that you're installing, how many years are we looking at? If we're starting in Jamaica Bay before we get to downtown Jamaica and Archer Avenue in that area?
Sure, I don't have a map with me, but there's public information that shows all of the southeast Queens projects. And so there are the trunk build outs, but it's not just that it has to only start in those at the bottom of the trunk and build out with the sanitary, it's more that's more the case. But because there's portions of the storm sewer system in in southeast Queens that were built out but need to be expanded, or also maybe some areas can be connected to existing networks, maybe an area had and didn't have a network, but then can be connected to an existing network. Because of that, the 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 build out has kind of happened across parts of southeast Queens. So it's not just it's not saying that if you're inland from Jamaica Bay, you're going to have to wait twenty years for this build out to happen. There are quite a few areas that have already been built out or upgraded since the program started and also areas that are in planning for that to happen and then within the tenure plan.
Okay, I'm specifically interested in the area around Suppan Boulevard that's to the south of Suppan that's mainly manufacturing right now, although there are a few, there are some single family homes there. And there is some development going on, particularly of hotels and there's a and when that area, which it seems to me will be ripe or rife with development, when that because that area has a history of flooding. I'm interested in when that area will be done and whether the SD one and twos are going to cover the issues since they tend to be along the entire district, not just one buildings.
Is it possible that we can get back to you on that?
Absolutely. I don't expect you to have that at your fingertips.
I wish I knew it by by my by heart, but we'll be happy to get back to you on Suppan Boulevard and those specifics on that area.
Okay. And the second one is the cloud burst solutions. And when you were specifically talking about basketball courts and other activities, where in essence, you're creating a basin that a retaining basin. But it's going to be used for other purposes when it's not retaining water. Southeast Queens also has many low lying areas has had a mosquito problem. And the results of that. So in these cloud burst situations, how do you deal with standing ponding water?
Okay, so with these cloud the cloud burst projects, it's the water is intended to filter out more quickly than I believe mosquito larva can be hatched. I'll have to get back to you to
Okay, you get back to me on how that's going to work because.
It shouldn't be standing for, you know, many days. It should be a shorter amount of time. So the this this the Jamaica House, South Jamaica Houses example, it's connecting into the sewer, so it's not waiting to be infiltrated into the ground. It's waiting for the sewer to have capacity. So once the
So it's metered into the system?
That's connecting to the system. The the so some some cloud burst projects will use infiltration, but some of them, like South Jamaica Houses, will also connect into the sewer. So it's kind of once there's room in the sewers, they'll the the water will release back into the sewer.
And there won't be any surcharging?
No, because of the engineering, there'll be a kind of a weir or something that will stop it from surcharging up. So it's it's if the sewer if the sewer is full, then the water will stop going in. But then there'll be an overflow point where if the full South Jamaica Houses project is totally full, totally full of capacity, it's not going to keep flowing and filling up onto the grounds of South Jamaica. There's a point at which the engineers have designed it so that it will it will go back into the sewer system.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just give me more about that, I I'd like to understand how this retaining basin is going to work.
Okay, yeah, happy to.
And then my second question is for or third question is for DOT. And that's about the busways. We have heard from some of the merchants along Jamaica Avenue who are unhappy with the bus ways, particularly with their ability to get deliveries during the times when they are open and available. If their location is directly on Jamaica Avenue. I understand that you did change the hours of time from what six AM to nine PM. But how is that?
To eight PM, six AM to eight PM.
Okay, let me just. How does that work for a business? Can they get deliveries on the busway from there to there? And what are the rules?
So for the busways, they allow for buses as well as trucks and accessory vehicles to to travel along the entire corridor. So in the case of deliveries that need to be made, there are no restrictions for delivery vehicles or commercial vehicles to traverse the corridor if it's on Jamaica.
And they stop.
Correct. They can. We've we've worked to add back loading, excuse me, loading zones and metered spaces to allow better prioritization and access for those vehicles. And that's something that I think we'll want to continue to monitor how those are utilized and whether or not there's a need for any additional enforcement to make sure that those spaces are available.
Okay, and I assume those spaces are also available for persons, mobility challenged persons who are in vehicles of some type?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Chair. So I believe my question is for DEP. My first question would be, no, having developed some properties in southeast Queens in the early late eighties, early nineties, there were some homes that still had septic tanks and leaching fields. Is is that condition, does that condition still exist amongst some homes?
In southeast Queens, I'll have to get back to you to confirm that, but I think there may be a few in some some areas. But we'll have to we'll have to confirm if any of the areas still have septic tanks.
And if they do, is the plan to then connect them to the system? Or does the homeowner then have to themselves apply to connect to the system?
I'll have to confirm that with you. I think that most, I'm not sure if these areas would be along the hundred fiftieth street and and southern corridor, if it would be more to the east. So those might be different. Those might be different efforts that separate from the the chunks, the trunk sanitary sewer build out.
Correct.
Yeah.
I I do understand. I'm just trying to get a feel of of if we've gotten a handle on the number of septics and have we connected it to the main. The next couple of questions are going to be for the stormwater. So understanding that, again, there is an issue with the high water table in southeast Queens. I just never understood the concept of these retention tanks in backyards because the water is not going anywhere. And eventually, the retention tank is meant to because the water's not going anywhere and eventually the retention tank is meant to discharge water slowly back into the ground and of course back in somebody's basement. Um, along those lines, we're, we're proposing, um, the, oh Jesus, the, the term escapes me right now, um, the sewer.
Sanitary?
No, 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 the, for the, for the, the storm water and the plantings.
Green, uh, the rain gardens?
Yeah, rain gardens, um.
Bioswales?
Bioswale, thank you, that's the term I was looking for. So, are we strategically, um, locating these bioswales and, and, and green areas where we know they're not going to cause latent flooding in basements?
Yeah, so we do, uh, so every, every, um, bioswale or we, we've changed it to rain garden because it's a nicer sounding, you know, more, um, it's easier, easier to say word term and, and a little under, easier to understand. But either one, rain garden or bioswale. Yeah, so we do geotechnical analysis for each of these, um, where we're drilling in to see what the groundwater tables are like, what the, um, bedrock is like. So in, in, in areas of Southeast Queens, there isn't a lot of rain gardens, partially because there, there can be, um, groundwater issues and there can also be infiltration issues because we also analyze the, the, um, the sediment and dirt and the layers there. On the Bronx, um, there have been, as another example where it's not, groundwater is the issue, but, um, uh, high bedrock can be the issue in a lot of parts of the Bronx. So there are areas that where we would like to have rain gardens there, similar to Southeast Queens. We don't because of those, um, those, those conditions. Um, that doesn't mean that all areas, um, cannot, uh, support the rain gardens or infiltration. Um, we, we comply with DEC standards on how far the groundwater needs to be from the surface. Um, because, um, you know, a, a rain garden that's, um, that's infiltrating into the ground with the groundwater is low enough, it's not anticipated to affect, um, buildings nearby. And instead, there should be enough room to be able to infiltrate and not affect the groundwater because these are, these are pretty small systems that are distributed. So, which is a, a benefit in a number of ways. And one way here is that you're infiltrating some and you're helping stormwater and helping reduce combined sewer overflow and storms. But overall, you wouldn't be contributing a lot of stormwater, um, from the practice to the, the groundwater table. Um, but we really comply with DEC standards on groundwater levels and, and we do, we do, um, the engineering and, 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 um, work to assess basically every site.
And then lastly, knowing, knowing that we have now these cloud bursts and heavier rains as a result of climate change. I know the city's design of sewers is for one and a half inches flow. Is there, is the city intending on increasing that in the outer years? Or is there a plan, has there been consideration, are you thinking about it? I'm just, I'm, I'd, I'd like to know because I, I've seen situations where there's never been any flooding.
Hmm.
And on these cloud burst situations, water is actually flying up from the sewer and going, infiltrating people's homes where there was never any flooding.
Yeah, um, so the climate change projections are, um, a critical component of the Southeast Queens storm system build out. Um, so I can get it back to you on the actual size of the event that they're intended to, they're intended to hold. Parts of the city, um, hold, uh, were built out at different levels. And it's, it's unfortunate for some areas that were built out to, to, um, to be able to handle a smaller storm. And we are upgrading where we can, um, and we're opportunistic. We work with colleagues at Department of Transportation and, and other agencies to be able to opportunistically upgrade, um, uh, in certain areas, uh, when streets are being opened. And then we also have these kind of systematic programs like Southeast Queens where it's a broader planned effort to, to benefit, uh, different areas. So yeah, it's, it's a citywide issue and obviously with climate change, we're seeing storms that are, um, you know, should be a 10 year storm happening every couple of years and, and even bigger than that. And, um, you know, we're, we're taking that information and trying to see how we can use our rate payers' dollars to the best effect too, because, um, we need to consider, we need to keep into consideration the, um, the, the rate impact of some of these investments. So we need, so it's always a balance in what, which investments we choose, we choose to make.
And I, I, uh, lastly, um, knowing what we know now and how in the direction that we're taking, are, are any developments that are now planned, planning to use retention tanks in the backyard? I mean, I, I understand there's a detention system with a weir on the roof, slowly leaks water out. That makes all the sense in the world because the world, the water is being held in a pool, if you will.
Hmm.
But when it gets to the backyard, I mean, it's going to, again, seep into the ground. So are, 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 are retention tanks being eliminated or, or do we know what's happening with those?
Um.
Because then to, to, to get a new home and put a retention tank in the back and we know that it's going to flood makes no kind of sense whatsoever.
Yeah, so, um, I'll, I can confirm the exact details of that, but one part of the stormwater rule was also affect, the unified stormwater rule from 2022 that also affects single family homeowners is to, uh, have the detention tanks reduced, uh, at a slower rate. So at times they had to have a larger tank, but it, um, will reduce, will release more slowly. Um, so that's an important aspect of the stormwater rule. But, um, I'll have to ask our, our, my colleagues in Water and Sew operations if the, if retention tanks are being eliminated or discouraged, uh.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know because we're, we're making all these plans, but if we're, if we're still keeping some of the old system in place that didn't work, what we do now is not going to work if we don't clean up what we have before.
Sure, noted.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks Commissioner, Commissioner Ramperchad.
Uh, thank you, um, a lot of the questions I was just going to ask or ask. Commissioner Marine, Commissioner Marine brought up a great point with the dry wells because we've been noticing the same thing where we follow house connections. You know, they're having us retain hun- almost 100% of water on site. But as he alluded to, these things get filled up, they're going to be useless within a year or two years, who knows? Um, one of the other questions I also had was about the cloud bursts and how they function and how they operate. So I'm not going to bother asking about that. I do want to know about the plan for Guy Brewer Boulevard, Merrick Boulevard. Was DEP, where is it at right now? What's the plan for it? Are you going to be improving the sewer system along those corridors? If you can just allude to that.
Yeah, sure.
And then I have one more question, but it's going to be for DLT.
Okay, sure, yeah, so for Guy, Guy Brewer and Merrick, um, yeah, we have assessed that and we looked at the capacity there. And the greatest need is on 150th, um, because of the current, um, usage of that trunk along with the, the greatest density going to the, to that trunk sewer. Um, but we have done kind of preliminary drainage analysis, um, in the area. And it's, it's kind of, you know, it's, we're, we're keeping an eye on it, um, and to, to see where the development goes and what the flows are at. But it's really not at the, um, you know, for ranking all three, the most important is 150th. So that's where our focus is right now. Um, but part of the upgrade to 150th will also help any potential future upgrades of those because, um, is what we call an intersepture sewer that goes along the, um, the Jamaica Bay and they all connect into it. So 150th is the closest to Jamaica plant. So if we upgrade that, that part is already done. And then if we have to upgrade more for the other trunk sewers that come down, um, from those areas, you know, we're already partway there, um, that answer your question? Okay, okay, thank you.
For, uh, DLT, um, recently you guys started doing work along Hillside Avenue, which is also part of this, uh, Jamaica rezoning and it's a major change that's happening. Um, I know you wasn't part of this presentation because I know I brought up and Commissioner Benjamin and a few other commissioners about this, uh, busway along Jamaica Avenue and Archer. So I just want to just touch back on Hillside Avenue is going to get impacted because you're only going to allow one lane of traffic and one dedicated bus lane. That's going to be 24 hours as well, and then you're going to have parking. Um, or is that going to be the same situation where it's going to remain 24 hours? And how does that impact all the businesses along Hillside?
Yeah, no, thank you for your question. Actually on Hillside, we actually have upgraded the bus lanes for sections that were in place for over, since the 1969 or thereabouts. So many of those bus lanes were curbside. And with this new design that we have put forward, that we're implementing, it actually moves a curbside bus lane to offset and restores over 650 parking spaces. Um, so we see that as actually a benefit to providing better access for businesses as well as, um, patrons who are, um, who are shopping at those businesses as well. And, uh, the bus lanes are, carry quite a lot of passengers and riders. Um, it also complements the MTA's Bus Network redesign, uh, which is actually on, currently underway, uh, with, uh, several routes along the corridor, um, that don't necessarily get blocked by, that won't be blocked by, um, general traffic. So it's still a moving lane, uh, but, uh, prioritizing, uh, buses.
Are there any plans to include a bike lane along Hillside Avenue?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, we are, um, what I can tell you is that we are looking to do a broader sort of assessment of like traffic patterns changing, uh, changes in traffic patterns, uh, in and around the Jamaica area, including Hillside to the north. Uh, and we'll probably be waiting maybe about six months or so to, um, once the traffic sort of gets, sort of normalized and folks sort of get adjusted to the new, uh, design. But really just doing a broader assessment of traffic changes throughout the, the area. And so we'll be kicking that activity off, um, next year. Stay tuned.
One last question, one last question, getting back to Jamaica Avenue. On the weekends, will you guys take a look back at allowing regular vehicle traffic to go down there? On the weekends, because I understand during the week it's, you know, it's busy, I get it. But to allow people, because right now, and the council members said the same thing, if I want to go, I don't know, 160th Street and I'm coming down Jamaica Avenue, I have to go through a maze of streets to get there. Um, but I'm just wondering, are you going to modify the hours further on the weekends?
So we take changes or requests for changes very seriously. Um, certainly deviating from those, uh, suggested hours may have broader implications for, 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 for delivering service. I, I think it's something that we are happy to continue to assess and evaluate, but, um, it requires more thoughtful analysis, um, on. And so that's something that again, for us, uh, we are continuing to open and, and be open to looking at changes in activity and seeing whether or not that warrants this activity on weekends. Uh, as I had said in my presentation, um, the ridership on Jamaica Avenue is almost three times as much as that on 14th Street. So it's still serving quite a lot of riders, even on the off, what you would consider off peak period. Um, so that's again, it's, it's something that we, we look at a ca- as a case by case basis.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, last up Commissioner Sario.
Thank you Chair, thanks so much to both sister agencies for being here. This is, um, uh, an important opportunity for us to ask questions. It would have been great to hear from you the day of the hearing because it's also an opportunity for the public to hear from you guys. But I really appreciate that you're here and addressing our questions. My questions are for DEP. So thank you again so much for the, the information that you've already shared. I had a chance to see the slides before the presentation and I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of what you have presented. Um, and also just wanted to underscore something you said that I think is, is very important for everyone to keep in mind, which is that according to the DEIS, there, there is no significant adverse impact related to the stormwater inundation. The problem here is that the existing conditions are already a problem. So to build a little bit on, on what Commissioner Marine was saying, you know, what we heard at the public hearing was people really concerned about the fact that on a normal rainy day, they're already experiencing everything that we've been discussing so far today. And so they're concerned that additional development is going to make it worse. You, you know, you, I think I appreciate the, the nuance that you introduced in terms of what, what works and to what extent and where. Uh, but you also talked about how climate change is going to make everything worse. And so I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about how does the green infrastructure, sorry, how is the New York City Stormwater Resiliency Plan specifically tries to address the issues in Jamaica? You know, because historically, when you look at the Green Infrastructure Project map, and I was just looking at it, it's really, really concerning to see how there's almost no dot, there are almost no dots in Jamaica, right? And the same thing happens in other low income neighborhoods of color, I have to say. I know in my mind, y- 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 it, it would be really important to explain how all of these constraints, you know, have driven your decisions to invest. I think you've explained today how green infrastructure projects need to be relevant in places where the conditions exist. I'm just saying that the Green Infrastructure Projects Map leaves a lot of questions in that regard and specifically low income communities of color lack green infrastructure investment. So, but my question really here is, is going back to, to the project under discussion. And so can you provide a little more detailed, um, inventory of all the different in, in investments that, you know, are within the New York City Stormwater Resiliency Plan here? And when do you anticipate that there will be an operation? You, you highlighted some of them, but you, you also pointed out specific neighborhood interventions and citywide interventions. And so I think it would be useful if you can share with us maybe like a more, a refined list with specific timelines. Do you think that could be possible?
Um, okay, so yeah, first let me get to your comment at the beginning. Um, uh, so the Green Infrastructure Program originally, um, started off with the goal of reducing combined sewer overflows, um, and it wasn't focused necessarily on reducing stormwater flooding. It's, it's evolved since it was founded in 2011. Um, so 2011, there were zero green infrastructure assets in the city. Uh, there are over 13,000 green infrastructure assets, about 11,000 of them are, um, are right of way. So the bioswales and some porous pavement. Um, over half of green infrastructure assets are in, uh, EJ neighborhoods as defined by the DEC. Uh, new about, new creation of what the, 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 um, DAX are, the disadvantaged communities.
I'm looking at this map.
Yeah.
And this is not the traditional environmental justice areas in New York.
Oh, okay, um, so if, if you'll see there, there's a, a large amount are in Corona and Flatbush, um, uh, in a lot, in, in East New York, um, then in, uh, parts of the Bronx that are getting a lot of porous pavement. Um, one issue with that map, it's a great map to be able to look in there. And also Jackson Heights, um, East Elmhurst, I, I walk by them all the time because I, I live there. Um, but you know, the, a lot of these are, are EJ areas. Um, that map, one dot can represent different assets. So one dot is a, is a rain garden, but one dot could also be, or a couple of dots could be a couple of the assets at a cloud burst or a large, uh, a, a larger site. So that gets to, um, uh, Southeast Queens. And granted, there aren't a lot of rain gardens in Southeast Queens and it's, it's because of the soils along with groundwater. It's also why there aren't a lot in, in, um, in the Bronx. Although we're installing, um, rain, we're installing porous pavement because, uh, because it's a shallower kind of asset that allows the soil to infiltrate the rainwater, unlike a rain garden's deeper. So you need like a deeper, uh, for more distance from the, um, from the bedrock. Um, so, so that's one reason why there's less, there's, there's less rain gardens and GI in, um, in Southeast Queens. Um, but we have a lot of larger assets and, and cow burst, uh, um, assets going in there. So as I noted, there's the South Jamaica Houses. Um, and then we have, um, Rufus King Park, Archie Springer Park, St. Albans, um, has a large median project, which are really beautiful, where the, uh, medians that used to be cement are then turned into green assets, which hold a larger amount of stormwater underneath. Um, and then, uh, we will green the, 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 kind of the cement scape on top of the median. Um, you can actually go and see, the first one we built is in, um, uh, kind of like north, I'm forgetting the exact, it's northeast, um, uh, Southeast Queens. But we just, we, there was a press release, we had the, the mayor and, and, and former deputy mayor were there, um, at the press, at the press event, uh, so that was exciting. So we have a lot of these larger, larger, um, assets. And I didn't list other assets that are happening in Southeast Queens, but I'm focusing on Jamaica. So there's, there's, um, these, these assets are going in now and they're in design or starting construction. Um, and, you know, in terms of, uh, construction schedule, we'd be happy to work with our colleagues to, um, identify what schedule we can public, we can publicly share with you. Um, because, um, as, as you understand, there's kind of contracting mechanisms and, and whatnot that kind of, that, that we have to consider, um, that, uh, you know, when there's planning, design and construction, so there's kind of like a lot of steps. But, uh, we can certainly work with our colleagues to, to identify which assets we can, we can communicate publicly for you and, and also for the public.
Yeah, thank you, that would be, that would be very useful specifically in terms of, um, downtown Jamaica and what refers to this project, just so we can understand that. You know, I, I, I appreciate your response. You know, I, I, I appreciate your response. I'm, I'm not gonna sort of like respond to it, but I, I just want to say that, eh, eh, you know, it's not the administration necessarily, there's a history of this investment that goes way back, but exactly for the reasons that you explained in terms of why there hasn't been those investments, I think the city owes an explanation to places like the South Bronx, Red Hook, Sunset Park, even a, a Green Point around Newtown Creek and places where you don't see sort of like the same level of investment. But anyway, I just have another quick question if I have some time. Uh, uh, thank you so much for the, 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 again, sort of like how you touched on different aspects of the issue. I had a super specific question, which is, you know, after the City of Y S, uh, for housing opportunity, the, the zoning resolution references the stormwater maps? And so I just wanted to, and ask if, if you can clarify, what is the status of it? Have they been codified? If so, you know, what should the public reference in that regard? Like, if, if somebody needs to go to the source of it in, at this moment, like where, where are we with that? My understanding is that the E P is in charge of it, but that's why I'm asking, but I don't know.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. And, and so you're talking about the stormwater maps for the A D U's, right?
Well, in general, yeah. In general, because the zoning resolution references them for the A D U's, but I don't under, I, I wanna understand what, what's the status of the map?
Okay, so, um, I don't know the exact address off the top of my head, but if you just search kind of E P stormwater s- street flooding map, uh, on Google, that will come up with the, the map that that's based on.
Yes.
So you can see the street flooding under different scenarios.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that. And then, so what you're talking about is from City of Y S and upgraded to that map, which is we're going to create, um, uh, buffers around those, around the different flooding areas as a preliminary, um, map to help, um, identify areas, uh, for A D U's, for accessory dwelling units and basement apartments. Um, so that is extremely close to being ratified. Uh, we're going to update our Commissioner Nick tomorrow about it, um, but I was preparing for this slide, so the actual date on that isn't on the top of my head, but we're extremely close to it. Um, and then the plan is that after that, there'll be a five-year period where, um, those maps will be refined and could made more robust to have a, a more, um, you know, uh, co- so had, there's greater confidence within the city about the accuracy of those maps.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's, any days now or maybe colleagues at D C P note that it's already out, but it, it's really close.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and thank you, that's you. So, so they haven't been ratified yet, but they will be ratified soon.
Yeah.
And, and, and you will announce a maintenance plan that goes along with that, just for the public to understand what is the, what's, what's that gonna look like? Is that correct? Did I understand?
What do you mean by maintenance plan?
No, like how many update, how long, how often are they gonna be updated or what's the?
Sure.
Um, I was just gonna add that the maps are actually out. We can share the link around.
No, I have it.
Oh, you have it?
But I'm, I'm asking whether they're in the charter or in the New York City Code, like where are they legally, how are they legally defined? That's my question.
Um, as part of the page, there is a note that talks about that this is still proposed maps and they're open for comments right now.
But that's my question. Like I wanna understand what is the status of this because the zoning resolution right now is referring to something that my understanding is in progress. So I just wanna understand what is the timeline for that?
We'll come back with more information.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Fair enough. Um, I think I, I, I'll follow up with additional questions. This is just very interesting. Thank you for addressing that. I wanna take more time now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, and again, thank you, uh, to both the E P and D O T for, for your presence here today. It's, uh, it's incredibly meaningful. We appreciate your time and everything that you do for the city, so thank you for that. Um, okay. We, um, we will be talking about this, uh, some more. Um, let me go back to you, Madam Secretary, for further items on today's agenda.
Okay. Uh, post-hearing follow-ups on 74 Bogart Street rezoning, we will have a staff recommendation at the August 11th review session. Next, we have 7801 Queens Boulevard rezoning, which had a public hearing at the July 16th public meeting. Derek is here to present.
All right, Derek.
The Department of City Planning finds the applicant's request for a zoning map amendment from an existing M11 zoning district to R7XC24 zoning districts and a zoning text amendment to map M I H options one and two as appropriate. These actions would provide 314 new dwelling units, 79 of which would be permanently income restricted. The proposed density is appropriate in this location, fronting a 200-foot wide street and within close proximity to public transit. The commercial overlay would continue to allow existing commercial uses as well as reinforce the, the local context of ground floor retail frontage along the Queens Boulevard corridor. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Derek.
Okay. Next, we have 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning, which also had a public hearing at the July 16th public meeting. There was a memo in your materials. Griffin is here to present.
Hi, Griffin.
Hello.
This is a post-hearing Department of Recommendation on 535 Morgan Avenue rezoning. The Department feels that the zoning map amendment to change an M11 district to C71 district is appropriate. This action will allow the conversion of an existing 20,265 square foot commercial space to a grocery store use. The current M11 district is restrictive in use and the changes in zoning district will allow for a grocery store over 10,000 square feet and provide new commercial opportunities alongside the Brooklyn Queens Expressway. There are no grocery stores at this scale within the surrounding area and this application provides a new opportunity to activate an existing commercial lot. The C71 district is appropriate and serves as a commercial edge between the Greenpoint-Williamsburg I V Z to the southeast and the mixed-use character of Greenpoint and Williamsburg to the west and the north. C71 districts have a maximum commercial and community facility for area ratio two and a maximum height of 65 feet. No parking is required at this site, but the parking lot will remain. Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Griffin. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Lastly, for post-hearing follow-ups, we have Claremont House, 1640 Anthony Avenue, which also had a public hearing at the July 16th public meeting. Cassandra is on Zoom to present.
Hello, Commissioners.
Hello.
So I'm here to provide a post-hearing update and staff recommendation for Claremont House or 1640 Anthony Avenue. Uh, first, I recall that the Commission asked H P D for an estimate of total monthly housing costs inclusive of, inclusive of mortgage, utilities and maintenance. H P D provided those numbers and you can find them on the screen. I'll quickly run through the breakdown for a one-bedroom apartment. For a one-bedroom apartment, the mortgage can be between 1,115 to 1,597. Utilities are estimated at 146 and maintenance payments can be between 743 and $976. The total monthly cost for a one-bedroom then can be between $2,004 and $2,719. Claremont House will also have two and three-bedroom apartments and you can find those numbers on the screen. Total housing costs are fixed, are fixed at 33% of the home buyer's income. If projected utilities or maintenance costs increase prior to close, sale prices will decrease to ensure that total housing costs do not exceed 33% of the home buyer's income. So D C P recommends that the Commission approve these actions, um, to facilitate this new 13-story residential building with approximately 65 homeownership units. H P D is requesting a U D A P and disposition of city-owned property, a zoning map amendment from R71 to R8, and a zoning text amendment for M I H. And those are my updates.
Great, thank you. We have a question for you from Commissioner Benjamin.
Sure.
Um, I, uh, sorry. I understand what you said about the cost being 33%, but what happens? That's the sales price in the relationship. As the years go on and incomes do not rise as quickly as expenses and costs, in the year after the purchase, what happens to the buyer when the costs of paying their mortgage and paying the maintenance for their unit exceed the 33%?
I don't have the answer to that. Um, I can.
If you could talk to H P D, um, since we're doing a bunch of homeownership projects in the Constellation and Mosaics, I'm really concerned about only concentrating on the one moment in time when the person is buying in as opposed to the 20 or 30 years of the mortgage period, uh, and what's gonna happen and what our expectation or assistance could be. So if you could talk to H P D and have them get back to us, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I understand. No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marin.
Yeah, so along those lines, uh, what, what, um, interest rate are you assuming in your example there?
Um, I do not have that, but I can, I can find that.
If we can get, if we can get the assumptions on your interest rate and if we can get price points for the units, that would be very helpful. Um, also, I questioned, um, certain aspects of the M I H layering, which it seems H P D has, does not understand as much as they'd like to think so. Um, and the answer is very simple. The M I H was layered in case this project became a rental project and didn't proceed as a homeownership project because the homeownership projects are subject to a regulatory agreement that set those prices and set future sales. So, you know, I, I really, uh, H P D needs to come to the table with more responses and, and, and when asked a question, they should provide because they don't do that and it's very disturbing and I want it on the record. Thank you.
Noted. Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, um, I don't see other questions on this one, so Madam Secretary, back to you. Anything else on our agenda for today?
That concludes today's review session.
Okay, as I suspected you would say. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners. We will see you Wednesday at 10:00 A.M. Appreciate all of your time and attention. We are adjourned.
Review time is 4:20 P.M.